Listen only mode.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have a little announcement to read before we actually start the meeting. It's in reference to the pandemic going around, but. We have a pandemic advisory due to the COVID-19 pandemic advisory emergency. This meeting will be held hopefully personally and virtually by communication media technology. For those here in council chambers, please do not have the go-to weapon or running on any of your electronic devices. In fact, if you would just turn them off, it's appreciated, as this may cause some feedback into the system. I'd like to remind everyone participating in the public meeting of the city to conduct themselves in a proper manner and follow proper procedures and protocols, including myself and board chair. Let's remember to be patient and professional while following proper decorum. For go-to webinar attendees, who wish to participate during the meeting, there are the appropriate public participation portions of the meeting. Click to highlight the hand on the upper right-hand corner of the screen, and this will ensure your microphone to be turned on, please, and you can use it to all work at the same effect. That will unmute your microphone at the appropriate time, and then one far you that you are live and ask for you to state your name and the city where you reside, and you can then begin to speak. You will have three minutes to speak. Please use appropriate decorum. The council can then respond to your comments, and we will move to the next commuter commentator until we have been heard. If you click the icon accidentally and clicking too many times, the handle disappears, and you won't be noticed. Rapidly clicking multiple times will put your hand probably not be displayed, and staff can't see that. Staff will only be monitoring the raised hand function of the go-to webinar, and the question function will not be responded around. Thank you for showing up tonight. This is our first meeting we've had publicly here in the city hall for like three months, I guess it's been. And it's good to see everybody back together and see the people that are here. Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And I would like to have Mr. Mayor President Brown be the president, please.
My pleasure, Mr. President. I am the mayor of the United States of America and to the Republic of Louisiana, on behalf of the nation, on behalf of the Congress, and to the citizens of the United States of America.
Please call it all.
Mayor President Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hope.
Here.
Councilman Pell. Here. Councilman Morrison.
Here.
Councilman Marina. Here.
Okay, we have a couple presentations and interviews tonight on our agenda. And the first one is to the Republic of Taiwan. Mr. Chen. Okay, we have a proclamation to Deputy Director of Economics from Miami, Florida. Whereas, if I think economic development in Miami, Florida, the city of Cape Canaveral have been developed a growing relationship. And whereas that relationship has evolved in a normal appreciation friendship between entities, and whereas together we have shared memorial, cultural experiences, educational endeavors, and social events. And whereas the city of Cape Canaveral recognizes weapons or are credited to our city in appreciation for a donation of two thousand medical packs. Another to our Senator Mayor of Cape Canaveral, City Commissioner for Parks and Forests, Florida. You hereby acknowledge our growing relationship and extend to our appreciation for the generosity bestowed on us by the state of the economy and culture of Miami, Florida. Signed and sealed with the State Department of Defense. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Okay, sure. We have another proclamation for Mr. Raymond to read.
I hope this is on. This official proclamation from the city of Cape Canaveral. Whereas hate violence has become a daily occurrence and is increasing at epidemic rates across the nation. And whereas history has tragically taught us what happens when people stand by and allow acts of violence, hatred, and injustice to occur. And whereas those that are exposed to such inadequate treatment often feel alienated, without hope and helpless to stand alone against the hate progression. And whereas on June 2nd, 2020, Isaac Selbo, President of the Florida League of Cities, expressed deep and sincere sympathy to the family of George Floyd and deplored and repudiated the actions that led to the loss of life. And whereas the city of Cape Canaveral stands with the Florida League of Cities, President Isaac Selbo, and other municipalities in Appleton that sympathy to the family of George Floyd and others that have suffered similar face and deplorey and repudiating the actions that lead to the loss of life. And whereas the city of Cape Canaveral is committed to supporting the Florida League of Cities pledge to work as a family of cities to respond to the call for equality being heard throughout our nation. Now therefore, our Mayor Robert E. Pope, Mayor of the City of Cape Canaveral of Clark County, Florida, hereby proclaims commitment to supporting the Florida League of Cities in its mission to create a framework for equitable communities and declare that the city of Cape Canaveral stands against hate. I just would like to say briefly, I felt that this was very important for us to stand as a city. I think that it is time in our city that we have an honest discussion about racism, that we make it very clear that we will not have hate in this city. I stand with Florida League of Cities and Space Coast League of Cities as a group to stand up and say, this is not going to happen here in our city. And I think that we all need to practice kindness in these uncertain times. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is from Florida League of Cities. So presentation of this calendar or review class of two, one, two, that says on the ass of the Florida League of Cities and Councilor Daily Boarding the place to present this certificate to you and the completion of eighteen hours of instructions that Institute of Records knew of the in Texas of Florida on January the tenth, which is March one. Sergeant Sir Hope, that he found the program of talent and work well. Now that you have taken it. This is to offer to handle. Also, I encourage you to take the standing of other training opportunities to the Florida League of Cities. You can find dates and locations on our website. It's probably believed that the institution is indicative of your continued commitment to improving equality in municipal government for if we may, to release this certificate. We now have a second call on us. We hope that to you in the future for our league city events, Sergeant and Director of the University. Congratulations. This Raymond also has the review class. On behalf of the University, Florida League of Cities University, please throw awareness and certificate to you for the completion of the U of three, the leadership calendar till March sixth and seventh. We hope that you found the program of talent and work well, that it built up upon your leadership skills. We encourage you to take advantage of other training opportunities from the Florida League of Cities University. We hope you will let us know if we can bring your city or region. We strongly believe that your attendance at the U of three is indicative of your continued commitment to improving quality municipal government in your part in Florida. Today, the assistance you have given, now has picked off. You are now eligible for U of four, which builds on your personal leadership skills. It is only a notion with the Florida League of Public Affairs Conference. For 2020, it will be a derogatory single period of sentence, whoever's party in court. It will begin at eleven thirty at the conclusion of the legislative conference by the season and will begin Saturday afternoon at approximately three thirty. We send you a personal invitation once for the traditional petition to send. Thank you for your continued education to your city public service and future part of the world, speaking of teachers, Florida League of Cities and Florida League of you. You got Lynn Gibson, Director of Florida League of Cities University. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks a lot. All right, get back to it. Get to the agenda. Okay, we had our presentations. We go into public participation for anything the public wants to talk about other than our item on the agenda. If anybody wants to just say something other than anything on the agenda? There are none, or close public participation webinar. Webinar. Daniel.
Uh, we do have one hand raised by Mr. Don Willis. Uh, Mr. Willis, you have three minutes. You're on.
Technical issue. Did not raise my hand.
Understood. Uh, we do have some emails for public participation that were received by the deadline.
I can read those emails straight.
He said that he has some emails, so that's moving forward to the record.
I have an email from Mr. Eric Ross. And this came in June sixteenth at eleven forty-six eight AM today. A statement for public comment, six sixteen Cape Canaveral City Commission Meeting. Dear Mayor Hope and Commissioners, my name is Eric Ross, and I live at fifty-three twenty-three Northwest One Hundred and Nineteenth Terrace, Coral Springs, Florida, three three zero seven nine. I'm reaching out to you on behalf of KDL, the Anti-Defamation League, where I work full-time as a Senior Associate Regional Director. I would like to thank you for adding item number three to consent agenda for this meeting, and I strongly urge all of you to vote in favor of it. We are living in unprecedented, unprecedented times. We may all be stuck at home, but unfortunately, that means hatred is being left unchecked in alternate places. While your news feed may be filled with updates on the number of coronavirus infections, what you aren't hearing much about is the massive attempt by extremists to place blame for this pandemic, specifically on the Asian-American and Jewish communities. Clearly, there is no root for hate against anyone in any of our communities, but at this point in time, we are only seeing two specific groups singled out for blaming over and over again with extremist communities, and especially online. This resolution will tell the whole country that Cape Canaveral is firmly opposed to using COVID-19-related hate to victimize, to discriminate, or to demean any member of your community. If passed, you will be among the first in Florida to take this important stand, and I would like to thank you in advance for your leadership in doing so. Sincerely, Eric Ross, Senior Associate Regional Director, KDL. And I have another email from Pat Campbell, came in Monday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty, at two forty-four PM. This is in regards to consent agenda. Item one, the special meeting of May eighth generated discussion about how the meeting came together and who called it. It was not clear to me that the meeting was in compliance with our ordinance, section two fifty-seven, special meetings. And he's placed code language in here. Mayor, do you want me to read the code language?
I, I don't know.
In section two fifty-seven, special meetings. And at the end, he asked, please explain how the meeting was initiated. A comment that came through the public comments online. Carol Lund, a Cape Canaveral property owner, four twenty-five Buchanan Avenue. She states, I wish to know the council's position on five G and the placement of towers every two hundred and fifty feet throughout the community, as well as the four thousand plus satellites that will be radiating down upon us at all times everywhere we happen to be. And that's the last email. For our first session.
The whole public comment?
That's all of the public participation, yes.
All right, can we move on to the fifth round of the panel? Is that it?
Yep, Mr. Mayor. I would like to poll just for a very group discussion, item number one and number four, please. If there are no others. I know that we pass items two and three on the consent agenda.
All seconded.
Okay, we have a motion to pass two items on the consent of the items two.
Mayor President Brown.
Forward.
Mayor Hope.
Forward.
Councilman Pell. Or Councilman Morrison.
Forward.
Councilman Marina. Forward.
Mr. Martin. Yes, Mr. Marina, thank you very much. Um, I actually just noticed this in the, in the, uh, May eighth, others present. I do not see Commander Walters' name on that. And I would have pulled you out earlier, but I, I just looked at it and looked at it and just all clicked at once. Um, so if the minute that the council agrees, that should be added under the others present. And if my mind's not slipping, I believe he was there and participated. That was it. And I, the, the public comment that came in today, um, I mean, I can do my best to answer it, but going back to that meeting on, on how this meeting was called, who called it, um, there was confusion and there still is confusion today. Uh, on that, I think it got twisted, um, along the way, it went from a discussion and it seemed like it was a proposed, um, resolution, uh, which our city attorney explained in that meeting that, no, this is a discussion. But just from a matter of formality, um, in the process is that meeting was a response, let me back up. Councilmember Keller, at some point in the week after the county opened the beaches, asked for a special meeting. Our city ordinances say that for a special meeting to happen, you need at least three members, the majority to agree. I was the only other member that agreed to that, so therefore there was not enough to conduct a special meeting. I reached out to our city attorney and I asked, well, can I, if the other council members don't want to meet, understand law, open to the public, following all the guidelines for our public meeting, can council member I want to meet with her? And can we still have a meeting? He said, yes, just call a meeting. And it was a meeting to discuss the, the, uh, the beach park enclosures. In the pursuit of scheduling that meeting and working with city, um, staff on where we're going to have this meeting, how, and you know, and follow all the public notice guidelines, uh, with Todd and Anthony and Mia and Daniel. Um, the meeting, we, we, we ended it, it was a conference call, and I believe the mayor came back in as a third and said, I will meet, and shortly after, so that triggered, now we can go back to a special community. And then that triggered, I think, for those of you, we all ended up attending that meeting. I think the confusion that, that, that Mr. Campbell, I can't speak for him, is something that, that I understand is somewhere along the way between a meeting that called, it's just a meeting of two, welcoming more council members that they wanted to, to come to discuss these parking. I never got my third vote. I don't know where, how it got, um, changed because the meeting came out as Todd morally, um, our interim city manager had a proposal for the meeting, and I think that that created a lot of confusion if you go back to their agenda. It's, and it's got a recommendation, and so it was in a no means land, if you will. But I don't know who the three people agreed to that meeting, who, who called the meeting. Um, and, and that's the best I can answer that question. If there's any other other councils to add? I don't, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Who else?
No, I thought he took off, uh, number four.
Uh, four? What were we discussing first?
Yeah, we just finished at number one.
Number one, sorry. We have four, item one.
I told you item one and four. Um, so item four, briefly, I did speak to the city manager about this one. Um, this property owner has two specific trees our city arborist went out, um, found out that they were not hazardous by the, uh, survey that he completes. Uh, unfortunately, these two trees are right, uh, over the footprint of two, uh, residential properties that were going to be developed there. And I think that because they were healthy, um, and they weren't presenting a danger, uh, state law says that in those cases, cities can regulate, make decisions on removing the trees and or mitigating them. Had there been a danger present, state law, I think it wouldn't have gotten this far, if I understand it correctly. But chatting today with Todd, I had a good conversation about it, and I don't know if, um, got a chance to speak with our city attorney. But with the, the state law, I think we've got an opportunity to, um, go back and make our ordinances consistent with state law. One of the things is when we look at the definition of a hazardous tree in our, um, ordinances, it says that a hazardous tree shall be lead by the city arborist. I didn't like that because, um, it a private arbor owner should not have to work through the city arborist and I see how it can be read that way. As long as that arborist is what the international, um, the license for arborists, um, as state law says, I think that's an opportunity to, for, so that's for another discussion, but I did talk to Todd about, I would think the version today that we come back and, and, uh, take a look at, uh, that section of state law and look at our tree ordinances. Um, but in this one, it leads me to my point that pertains to this, this particular, um, property owner, uh, and I think Todd's going to be ordered into it. They've had to wait longer than maybe necessary to be determined to get this approved. And just moving forward, you know, if a property owner wants to use their, their arborist, they can to speed things up. It was a time issue. Um, may not be a time issue, but it's something, and also with the fees that, that we can clean up as well. So we got our arborist going out doing this, and then kind of the order of, of the application submitting these is to be confusing, but I spoke to this property owner and, uh, you know, can speak for himself, but I think he waited much longer than he wanted to. So, um, I just, I I think council obviously is going to be supportive, but moving forward, I hope we can stop them so that they can afford with their properties. Thank you. That's all the comments I had, Mr. Mayor.
What was the reason he had to wait so long?
With the time, my friend, he didn't have to wait as long as, as we think them to be determined. It's all got it. The fact that give the work through our city arborist can create a time issue. Um, for all I know, arborists can be fast and there, and, and so um, in this particular case, I don't know.
The, um, that's looking to the, the, the timeline straight on this, he's ready to make a presentation on the timeline. Oh, presentation, uh, um, yeah, the, uh, this, if, if you go back and look at the history of these tree application permits, they generally just zip right through the process. Our, our guy, our, our tree, our, our arborist, our arborist, out there within a week to do this evaluation, uh, fill out this through the inspection form, so this was a, uh, one-off. I'd characterize it as that, I think the COVID issue and the council's leading schedule over the last two or three months, uh, was also another factor in, in pushing this. Uh, we did speak to the property owner about pushing it, and my understanding is he was okay with it, because the, uh, I don't know, it's not very sharp on the project, but that's my understanding. Councilmember, uh, Morrison may have heard something else, so, um, but I think I'd like to characterize this as a one-off, particularly because it's very recently quickly, and there just was some strenuous circumstances, uh, associated with this one.
I don't know, we've reviewed several specialties over the years.
Yeah.
And is there any real long wait period?
Uh, this was, no, this was average.
The reason you say this, probably, uh, at least, we usually haven't verified any of those. I don't see a problem with the way, with the table, other than the fact that we have had meetings here, virtually, we have had a real contact, the neighbors pull the outside together like that. I don't have a problem with it. So arborists, we've got two. That is, but twenty-five years, but it's all. Uh, I don't know of any complaints we've ever had on review of the trees, other than people that take them out. Then you get a complaint with the arborist. You know, they have a pretty smooth thing when it comes to the, to the mitigation of trees.
I would say, leave it like it is, why readdress the issue that really is no issue. Um, COVID presented a particular situation that's not going to be happening for from now on, if you try to say, leave it like it is, we have existing issues or issues that cannot be addressed at that time, right now, there's no issues.
Yeah, so I think we all agree that sounds like everyone's going to pass this through, but I would like to make a motion that we have to have the city attorney determine if we have an issue. Uh, I, I think we do, the fact that our ordinance is saying you have to work through our city arborists for something to be hazardous, that I think can present some problems. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
Yeah, I think we should have, perhaps, the arborist, um, to address the state preemption issue. Because there are certain preambles now of residential properties, so that would be worse.
Okay. That's good, so no motion needed, thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, if you're ready, I'm, I'll call this, so we can get moving along. I move that we, uh, pass adopted minutes, item one and item number four on the treatment of that.
All second.
Anybody want to weigh in on this, on the record, or you? Anybody out there? I don't have any cards.
I think, I think we'll realize that that was, that was on here, right here, uh, I'm leaving this down. Um, I was concerned for that emergency.
We have a microphone, we have to take, did he do? Uh, make out a card, so we have a record for you.
Yes, I will. Um, I wasn't aware that, I wasn't aware the whole one turned. Um, but I was a little confused when you had that emergency meeting. Um, because we don't have them that often. And to have an emergency meeting when we were being quarantined, um, as a citizen, I just kind of put that, we're only moving the parking up two weeks. I didn't understand the rush, I felt it began deflecting to the county. The county wanted to open up their, um, properties. Well, that's why they're the county, we're the city. We, you had something that I believe that I tried, that we were opening on the 15th, yeah, I don't have any notes with me, because I wasn't ready to address that today. But I did reach out to some of our, uh, city, ask people. I was concerned, like, what is so rushed? And my concerns, I live on, on each person. So yes, maybe the rest of the city was very comfortable with having people from people outside of our city coming to our city. I wasn't that comfortable. I was willing to wait two more weeks, I wasn't going to make any waits. That's what we agreed on as a community, I felt like being a little bit pressured by the bigger community surrounds us, with a little pain. And they, you know, if that was our program, I felt we shouldn't stay with it. To call an emergency meeting on that night, I didn't really get what the urgency was. And during the time of quarantine and us following the real polls, I didn't understand that something mattered, and that probably really didn't affect our citizens. We don't have facilities, we don't have bathrooms. Yes, they're walking on the street, yes, they do every day. But none of the businesses were open that they could go in and use their bathrooms, like they would have done on a normal day, or businesses were not open to let these guests use bathrooms, because there's none available. My concerns for my children, my bridge, no, my bridge. You know, and I didn't want people defecating in, in the side of their cars, of course, in the bushes and I don't think they'll need that, so yes, I was opposed to it. Yeah, I'll do whatever the city says is good, but at that particular time, I didn't see an urgency. And I don't think that we should slough the times that are like, I called Mrs. Kellum, I don't know who else was on. If it wasn't mandated by three people, then we shouldn't move forward. And I, you're very good at putting stuff out on, on the, um, on your block, I remember you there. I commended you doing that, but I just feel you were overzealous. And you used used something that didn't need to be used that day. And I wasn't.
Alright, we have the bottom one. Open for items one and four, correct?
Mayor Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hope?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum or Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Rayman?
Four.
Good, item four. Set aside a, 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 to the front, this is a five more, it's from the city manager. Our arborist basically could go off, or search, find, if you do. That's good. I have several cars, and I know there's a lot of comments out there, probably. Uh, the perfect, you want to?
We wait for that. Um, I'm going to.
Well, but I'm listening.
Yeah, I think it's important that we.
Oh, okay. No problem. Yes, sir.
I'd like to say, uh, most of you know that I am a judge in the process. I felt right from the very beginning, not code, that the appropriate method, well, to have some type of a local search, I'm not talking about a national search. And the reason why I think that this is so important, it is for the transparency and fairness to our residents. Now, after I say that, I have to tell you the positives about Todd Morley. I think we've been in very uncertain times with this pandemic. And I want to tell you my experience with Todd Morley. I see that he is always respectful, responsible. I feel that he's very loyal to the city, he has eighteen years' experience. The staff is in favor of Todd Morley becoming the city manager. I find that Todd Morley is open to discussion. When I encountered during the pandemic, several phone calls, several times a day to all council members. And he was willing to listen to new ideas during that time. I don't think that Todd Morley got very rich sleep. I never received a telephone call from our former city manager. I don't think he really cared what I thought. I'm not certain about how respectful he was to our city council. I feel that Todd Morley is knowledgeable about our local area. I also am very, very, very happy that he has started a new crew with local city managers, so that they can agree with one another. Especially during this emergency, there were a lot of decisions they had to be made. But I'm really very happy that Todd Morley reached out to the council, and he asked us, he surveyed us every single time. And every, every day, we had two or three messages about the pandemic, so I had no questions about COVID nineteen, because I was provided with one hundred percent of the information Todd Morley received through the city, I received. And not only that, I also received information from Space Coast League Cities and Florida City Cities. So there was a lot of reading and a lot of time, and a lot of uncertainty from all of us, there still is. However, I feel that, um, Todd Morley's done a good job, but then other emergencies, little emergencies, like the water leak up on the second floor. And what I know about Todd Morley is he doesn't get very excited, he stays quite calm. Quite calm. And, um, I'm very impressed with that. Now, remember, remember what I said right in the very beginning, that I was for a local search. I'm not saying that after that local search, that maybe Todd Morley would stand head and shoulders above every other candidate. I don't know that. I don't know that. But I feel confident that he would be able to stand quite high with the people in the city and the residents. I had many, many comments pro Todd Morley and some against Todd Morley. And this has been on my mind since October. And I have really thought it out very clearly. And at one time, I had a paper all written up, pro con. And many times, I went into that piece of paper, and I looked at all the pros and all the cons. And of course, we all want to do the best for our residents. And we do want the best city manager. And I feel that this is probably the most important thing that a city council does, is to approve the city manager. I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Good, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. Since the beginning of this, um, Todd, Todd Morley is someone who has stepped into this role as our acting interim city manager and carried the torch from, on behalf of the administration, into the functions of our city, and, and done a very good job in many respects. I talk to Todd a lot, and I think since the beginning, the it always has been accessible, um, and been able to overcome some challenges, and, and I'm thankful for, and, and I think that from the beginning, I was wanting to brought up Todd's name, and, and I knew that out of what we had and understanding the willingness of the staff, Todd was the right pick. Now, what we decided on six months ago was an acting interim city manager, and at that time, councilmember Raymond, and she's been consistent on message, was saying, no, we all like Todd, but, uh, there, there's a process that we, not against the person for the process, I've shared that message on other things, I've, there's been projects, I'm not against the project, I'm against the process. And when you look at our process for hiring a city manager, we don't really have one in our city. People have asked me, what, what do the ordinances say, how do you hire? We don't. This council, when, when councilmember Raymond put up her pros and cons, I think we probably go up, I don't know whether it was in our head or in the world, but we as a council have never came together and said, what are the pros and cons that we want as a council for the city manager? My hope six months ago, the reason why I went for that, was because we were supposed to have a strategic planning meeting, and at the strategic planning meeting, that was going to be an opportunity for us to meet with Todd and to, to lay out some of our desires, and that would have been a good opportunity because the, the bank, the piece of paper was actually going to be blank this year for one of the first times. And as councilmember Raymond said, um, that was a time where we could really work together as a council and outline. But if you were to ask these councilors, all of us, what we are looking for in city management, probably get different answers. And that's okay. But if you would ask us, what is the, what are the five things that we all agree on? We don't know. I don't know what Mayor Oden is looking for in a city manager. I don't know what anyone up here, my fellow council members are looking for. And of course, I think there's going to be things that we agree on. But today, we look at a city's procurement process. When we go out for a capital project, we have to go out to bid. We have to go out and see what the different options are. And when we ask, well, what about hiring, I agree, even with councilmember, the most important, I don't think position in our city, but one of the most important decisions will, uh, many city council members come and go and never have to bear this decision. They pay in, there's a city manager in place, they go, city manager's gone. And while there's a big opportunity, there's a downside too. If we were a Friday company, I'd be ready to go and to make other a worse business, other people's money, and to be good stewards with it is something that I, I take very seriously. Todd is the best option right now that we have, but he's also the only option we've, we've, we've really looked at, other than other internal candidates. And I think that we do owe it to the citizens to go out and to go through a process that is being respectful. I don't want to, Todd is my favorite right now, but I don't want to play favorites by not putting it out to the public, and that is where I think a lot of citizens are today. Um, as many of you know, I did reach out to citizens, uh, and I've been doing that since the beginning, talking to people, uh, asking, and there is next, there's people who say, hey, if you know he's the right guy, go for it, move forward. There's folks that say, no, you need to go out and do, you know, a, a search, is it advertised on your website? Do people know about this opportunity? How do you know you're making the best decision? And, and I told this to Todd and that one, and I said, Todd, you're going to be really difficult to, to, to beat for somebody to come here, but I would be foolish to say, it's like there's better people out there, the beat lots better, all this, that if we don't go out and look at options, then I think we're, we're, we're not then I think we're, we're not following the process that, the due diligence that this requires. And so that's where I stand today. Now, some of the folks who told me less, go forward. I can make a very long list of positive things of Todd that he's done. Can I agree with any things that Councilmember Raymond said? But along the way, like anything, especially during challenging times, I have concerns. There has been unilateral decisions that were made during the state of emergency that I've talked to Todd about, and I didn't like the way it went. And for those of you out there who are saying, you know, from a citizen's view, I get it. But when we get into the day-to-day operations, there are some concerns, some judgment calls that I've been faced with that I think that need to be addressed and that need to be clarified. And with that, maybe we can move forward. But to not take an investment and to say that, you know, with its fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars is too much money to be spending. We've got a big budget. And if you want to find the fat in our budget, I can show you where the fat is. And an investment for recruiting to go out and find someone, that is a very wise investment. No other position in this city will cause a greater downside or upside. And to put that out and see all the options for a potential, a person that could be here for the next five, ten years, is a wise investment. My decision, I think many of the citizens have spoke. I've agreed with Councilmember Raymond since the beginning. I think she has been on the right side of this issue. And I respected her consistency there. I've heard a little bit where the other council members are. If I had to post my as a pick, I'd go to Todd right now, no doubt, and we've done that. But I do not feel comfortable doing that because I think that there's a process we need to follow. And we, as a council, have not come together and wrote out a job description of what the ideal city manager is. And I think there's a lot of resources out there that I'll share within the discussion that we can take advantage of right now, that can really help us make a good choice. And if Todd comes out as the best person, we know we've got the right decision. He can grow from that process, we can. And we can all work together to, to make this a success. So thank you.
All I'd like to say is I'm hearing a lot of buts. He's a good city manager, but, but let me get this straight. And I'm hearing also, you know, Todd, what we're looking for. What we're looking for, we're not still having to select them. Why are we, there's nothing worse. I went through the same process with the Hyatt River Patrol years ago. Elected a Colonel from the Hyatt River Patrol, Illinois State Police. All the credentials in the world. He lasted three years before he was removed. So all of us that we're hearing is, he's good, but, he's good, but I'm tired of hearing buts. Todd knows, he's familiar with the businesses in our community. And I don't think that's what he's familiar with people. You've got to show some type of career path in any job that you're in. I'm like, these people that work in the city, our staff need to know when they're going to the job, there is some upward mobility. They've got to have upward mobility. There's no perfect candidate out there. Everybody's looking for this perfect candidate. Everybody's going to come with some high positions. Everybody. There's no fives out there all the way straight through. And they say, you know, everybody has some things they need to do better with. When we're talking about Todd, he is there. Every time I've asked Todd something, he has responded, responded in time. And I also had gone out and sent out a mass email to the citizens of Cape Canaveral and got fifty people here that responded. They're all in favor of Todd Morley. You know, I don't do that last-minute emails to people. So I would like to have him show, show that it's not, this is not a popularity contest. We're talking about picking the right city manager for the city of Cape Canaveral. Why not Todd Morley? I say, why not Todd Morley? Todd Morley is the people, is the person that the citizens of Cape Canaveral want. And I'm telling you, I want him also. And I haven't heard one person say a good reason not to keep Todd Morley. Thank you.
This is a very hard decision, an important decision for our city. I've been thinking about it, talking to people. I thought a month ago that we, let's just hire Todd Morley and, and get it over with and move forward. I think when, when the council, I wasn't on the council then, he taught months, they tried to search. I think that Todd, you know, I had written down some notes here. He works at the will of the council. I believe he works well with people. He's, he has opened up his office. He's had citizens coffee with the people. I think he's giving power back to the council, which a lot of it is taken away by a former, former city manager. He has an open door policy. Him and I have butted heads a little bit, had a couple missteps in the beginning, which I wasn't very happy about. But he always, every time I call him and say, Todd this or Todd that, he writes on it, he fixes it. I think, I think it's about time that he is not walking on eggshells anymore. He needs to get the job. I haven't made up my mind fully. I'd like to hear what the public has to say. I've seen emails. I've got a lot of phone calls today. And I think as far as the job descriptions in, in our city charter, section two, one-on-one, is the power of leading the city manager. And he kind of spells out what we're looking for, how he should, the jobs that we need him to do. As well as section two, one-on-one tells us that the city manager should follow these and how they should, he should do it. Also, in our charter, section four, section four states that personnel could be promoted from within on the merit system, the ability to do the job. No one has more, more experience in our city than Todd. He's worked with and for the council to bring decorum to the meetings, which I think now at this time, we need decorum, we need togetherness, we need to work as a team. And I think that Todd would be a good leader. He, he does, you can feel the difference in the atmosphere of City Hall when you come here, since Todd's been here. People are happy, staff is happy. Like again, I say, you know, I, I've, whatever, whatever we make, whatever decision we make as a city council, somebody's coming in that. But I think it's, especially now, we have COVID-19 that, that has been rough for all of us. We're going into hurricane season. I just don't think that we should prolong this anymore. Like I said, I'm not completely made up my mind. I think the money that we would need to spend to go out to move for someone, do we have the money now? I'm thinking a lot of questions. I mean, revenue hits right now with COVID and everything that's happening. I think if we did go on a search, maybe we should do it for thirty days and do it with the city, that doesn't really be that important right now, for sure. I just think there's, you know, promoting from within, what Councilman Brown says, you know. It's great to be in a city and you've been here eighteen years. Promote from within, I mean. And his job description is, is spelled out in our, our city codes. We have a lot of projects ahead of us. We have tough decisions to make with the budget restraints and the, and the way the, the economy is going. I think enough time has passed. And hopefully we can, we can give him a year contract. And hopefully have a, run from our mistakes from the past with the past as city manager. He's a leader because staff respects him. But again, I, I'm not fully convinced one way or the other. I really believe that if they broke, they'll fix it. And to move on and be cohesive as a community. We got a lot of work to do ahead of us. We got a multi-generation facility coming up. A lot of things happening, and I think we just need to move forward. A couple of other things, he's been here eighteen years of service. I looked at his evaluations, they were all good, even from city manager to me. I heard it wasn't easy to get. You know, like I said, hurricane season's coming, we're getting through this. I'm open for discussion. I want to hear what the public has to say. But I really think it's time for us to move on and, and bring him on board. Like Lamar says, give it a ride, take it for a ride. He has a year contract that we, and we use the evaluation tools, like if he should be any year, we can set him five, it's just not looked at. But I think for eighteen years of service, we should just let him have his job. And I would like to get in here from everyone.
You have another comment?
Mickey covered it. Thank you. She covered it. I just want to point out about the job description. And I, I was just going to say, anyone can call HR, we have a job description on the board. And the other councilor I co-wrote, I studied the resume that Todd gave us. He did give us the resume. And as my husband said, that was not a standard D resume. Thank you.
Well, I was not going to say too much because, but I'm going to just say it. I've been there for every city manager that the city's had. I've been involved in hiring three of the five. I think it was five. The three that we hired were all from basically, and they lasted the longest of ever done. Because they're basically staff-oriented. They go to the city. Couple of them live in the city. They knew the city, they knew the people, they knew the council. They lasted the longest. City managers' life history, probably four, five, six years. Sometimes they're long. There's been a few in the county that have been twenty-three to thirty years. But you get somebody from within, you know what they basically have. And basically, that's all I'm going to say. I'm told if anybody else want to open a department discussion, I don't know if there are a lot of emails.
All right. The industry of all this, job description, I know that the city, the two sections of city, that is not the detailed job description that I'm talking about. That's a broad policy set and expectations. That doesn't cover character attributes, that doesn't cover uniquely what we're looking for. And frankly, I'd be surprised if we don't have more than what this city has in there. So I just want to clarify, that policy is broad. When you get into job specifications and daily duties and checkets, our HR department, I don't think has that, nor, you mean go out and hit job descriptions. But the point is, is we had to talk about it as a council together, right? And that's just the logical step. We haven't, as a council member, talked about what, what, you know, just has Todd been interviewed formally? No. We, as a council, you know, haven't, I've done a listening session with the community. And we could say, it's been long enough. I get it while, while people, while we might be patient, but seriously, I mean, you're here and we just, we gotta, we gotta talk, I want to go here because I think there's confusion about this is that I've, I've reviewed Todd's employee file. Has any council here reviewed? When did you review this?
I reviewed it today.
Okay. So, so, no, it's okay.
I'm going to tell you what, what I was saying, the job description.
No, frankly, I want to put my foot down. This is what you do if you interrupt. I'm less time on the board. I just want to finish.
We got, we got like eighty emails.
Yeah, it's, you know, the reason why we have eighty emails is because it's a big, big issue. Let me just wrap up. The city manager, there is nothing more disgusting than what happened when we got separated, whatever you want to call terminated, our city manager, the former. He was not, in my opinion, anything we're looking for. And I've said five forever since being a truth, but the way that went down was not right. The citizens were not noticed. Maybe legally, we did, that was dropped on us last minute. We should have not. And we lived in this rush, go ahead and move forward. And we came out of that, we were all bruised. And I think this council made some really, really bad judgment decisions on that. Coming out, the worst thing we can do is rush back in to, to this. Executives do not necessarily get promoted within. It's nice when you can, but executives are typically employed in another place or outside. Todd doesn't have a strong executive resume. I reviewed his resume. Todd has eighteen years with the city. He's not the longest employee with the city. We've got people out in public works that's going this long. And remember, Tim Brown, when you say you're, you're hearing the butt and they're good, I'll tell you exactly my concerns. During the state of emergency, we, there were decisions made to close City Hall. Should have went through council to make some of these decisions. Special meetings, some of these emergency measures, like setting the fine at five hundred dollars. Those were unilateral decisions that were made that should have went through council. Todd made some of those, and I didn't like that, and I addressed that, that went down. So there. That's early, in the first few months. Then, when we get down the road, if you've been, if you reviewed the employee file, did you notice right on top that there's a payroll change notice? Did you see that? Mayor Brandon Brown? They spoke to you about it? Okay, so Todd, did you reach out to your, I guess Todd reached out to Todd, that's interesting. And so, so on October twenty-third, twenty nineteen, a pay increase. We were not under any city manager's agreement right on the top. We're under some, we're in no means to. And on, on October twenty-third, twenty nineteen, rate of pay went up for Todd, it increased. That increase was not approved by city council. Todd has known about that. That's the issue that I'm dealing with. That's my butt. Now, can Todd ever come in? Yes, he can. Do I agree with him? Yes. But to say that we are just going to exhale and do this, what's the downside of going out and seeing what other options are out there in comparison, knowing that we can look citizens of none, that we do what we're supposed to do? But the fact that Todd met with, and this is new information to me, who approved this raise? Change requested by Jane Ross, who is retired, along with us, CHR director, who I also had challenges with, and who was a little too close to our former city manager. Got a much better HR department now. But then the change was approved by what I believe is you, Mr. Mayor. But the silence. And the same, and I said disgusting intentionally, the same way that the city manager was separated, enemy with you and him, it seems that now there's been another beauty level decision, either by you or by Todd, where a pay increase has happened. We have not got a contract signed. That's a red flag to me. I made mistakes. I'm going to step up and say I made them. And I can overcome it and begin, I can talk to you. But we can't just sit here and ignore this. This deserves due diligence. I respect every single one up here, and I respect that man right there very much. But there's a saying in Cape Canaveral, there's a good old boy system. That, that floats around here, oh, the good old boy system. And I don't know exactly what that means, but I kind of think we all have our own definition of that. What I can tell you is to push stuff under the rug is a good old boy system. That's the way I, that's the way I feel. And I think we need to address this. This isn't easy for me to say. But I don't work for anyone up here or Todd. I work for the citizens of Cape Canaveral. And the citizens deserve to know, and the citizens deserve to go through a process that is respectful. We quickly got initiated, agreed, and now I feel like we're quickly moving and didn't even advertise the position. There's no injustice to Todd. What the word enter in front of his name, my uncle always said, it's not what they call you, it's what they pay you. And Todd's getting paid. Now, if he was thrown out this whole time and not getting paid, I would have a problem. He's getting paid. But I didn't approve it. And neither did this council approve. That's it. Yes, I'm sure. Thank you, Brett. Yes.
We're going to move into public participation. There are no more comments. We'll get comments after. We're going to get, get going. We're going to be up. I have in my possession seven cards. I believe it is for this item. First one on the top of the list is about it's in reference to item five. There's Bob Carney, three quarters, Santa Street. I've lived here thirty-four years. I'm here to support Todd Morley. And I would like the council to consider him as a permanent position. That's all I've got to say. Next one, John Price.
Thank you, Councilman John Price, one sixty-one, just there in Cape Canaveral. I have a couple of things. Number one, I'm in support of Todd Morley being appointed to a full-time city manager. And number two, I'm a little bit concerned and distressed about the way this has been handled. Eight months ago, we lost our city manager, and Todd was appointed as a temporary manager. And I believe that we and the council says that a decision would be made in six months. It's been eight. You've had plenty of time to do your searches and make, make your decisions. The statement about how important the city manager job is seems almost a joke to me, and that's coming from the city council, or certain members of the city council, because you haven't taken the steps necessary to find the city manager other than Todd Morley. You haven't stepped out, you haven't pulled, you've had the time. You say, well, fifty or twenty thousand dollars isn't much money when you're looking for somebody. We also have a tight budget. Fifteen or twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money if you don't know how you're spending it. I think you have done a bad job working for us, the residents of the city of Cape Canaveral. You haven't polled us, you haven't had any kind of formal meeting for anything. We get emails that's two hours before a meeting, and it doesn't do anything but express your opinion. It's wrong. And you folks need to make a decision and get it out.
Brad Pearl. Pearl, I want to hear it up. I'm not real good with computers. I try to send some emails. I'm not sure. So if my email comes up, please just guard it, because I am set fair, guys. And first of all, thank you very much for allowing me to speak, okay? It's what America's all about. I'm the mayor and city council. Good evening. Regarding the subject, city manager. For your reference, and I speak for a lot of my neighbors, I'm from the Jackson Avenue, Harrison Avenue area. For your reference, many citizens are dissatisfied or uncomfortable how former city manager performed his duties. How he was discharged and is supposedly golden parachuted. This is nothing against the current city manager or the current active city manager, Mr. Morley. But I believe we, the city, should hire an executive search company for total transparency. And I believe this Raymond mentioned transparency. The cost of the executive search agency will be less than the other gentleman's supposedly six-figure golden parachute. Since many of the city council members either own a local business or have interests in local businesses, this will clear any discussion about possible current or future pronunism for the new hire. I encourage Mr. Morley to apply. If he is the best candidate, so be it. The cake is on the verge of great growth. Let us find the best person for the position. I would also include a relocation package in the proposal. As Mayor Oak said, many of those former city managers that are successful live in the city. So the new permanent city manager can live and enjoy this space between. Thank you very much, guys.
And mayor, council members of the president, I just want to advocate for the council to take on employment search. I'm trying not to cover some of covered ground, but two things. Imagine the embarrassment, God forbid, and I know that, I work for them professionally and personally, and I have great confidence in them. But imagine the embarrassment and the egg on the face if something goes wrong in the future. And the process then gets questioned. It's not unlike the process of business over former city manager. It's just that, that scar is going to be picked on a long time. We cannot make the same mistake again. We have to go out and find or do employment search. The other thing is, you need to have citizens of all that. I've been involved in processes like this in the past professionally, and it's a very easy thing to do. If the council does it, you know, a lot of the way or without input from citizens, it's going to be just as damaging you know, to your reputation and how you're doing business. So I would advocate for an employment search.
Drew Moore, Russell. Who is it?
Thank you for having us tonight. I rise to your support, Todd. The main trait you're looking for of whether a person is a resident or a general or a CEO or a city manager is leadership. You're looking for a leader. A leader is a person that influences other people to want following. Period. You can read all the books, and I don't know that I read a lot. I've read a lot of them, because I'm sort of given leadership. I love leadership. I always tried to be a good leader, and I admire good leaders. The main trait is a person that makes other people want to do what they do. And, and that sums up Todd's attitude and his, and his life achievements. So I speak in support of Todd. He honors the city with his tact and diplomacy. He's knowledgeable in the city, he's knowledgeable with his trade and craft. So in doing this kind of work, you're going to have that difference. Everybody up here has differences with Todd, and maybe it's and, and that's fair. That's what intelligent, aggressive people do, that exchange ideas and give and take. And then after it's over, if you're a good person, honorable and person's honesty, you put it on the side and say, that was a good discussion. We made the right decision. Or if you didn't, you need to keep working. Oh, let's keep working. So what I've got to say about it is, he's a good person. He is a good leader. He makes people want to help him do the city's business. Thank you.
John O'Neill.
Thank you, John O'Neill, five hundred two Tyler Avenue in Cape Canaveral. I think we would be very remiss in not doing a search for a, for a city manager. Deserves to find the best. If the current that's fine, so be it. If you don't know what's up, Canaveral is unique, and that we get people from all over the state, and we have a mature population. We only have one elementary school. And with all the, with all these people coming, you get them from Central Quarter and Vacation Rooms, and what happens? They congregate because, because they're usually young, they're usually young, young adults, and they're part in. And it's not good for us, because we're a mature population. I go to the American Legion or the V W or the Masonic Lodge right down the hall, right down the road. And I'm usually one of the youngest ones there, and I'm seventy-two. And I'm, I'm leery to go to a sit-down restaurant because, because of this. And things need to happen to make things better and safer for us. I, I touched on Vacation Rooms. I just pulled something up. Total Way Vacation Rooms lists nine hundred and three Vacation Rooms in Cape Canaveral. Vacation Room by owner, eight hundred and seventy-three, Airbnb, three hundred and thirty. And I doubt whether there are many publicists in that. Where are these people coming from? And we cannot be so exposed to these, exposed to these people until things, things have to change for the, for the potential of the, of the citizen. I'm not saying shut it, play the waste of town. But it's a strong management. And all I'm saying is do your search, do your, do your due diligence, and for the, for the benefit of the community. Thank you.
I'm excited. I'm leaving the downtown neighborhood. I've been in the community thirty years. I also own a house, but I do go to our local restaurants, and I do feel our city is safe. We have, as you know, I always say, we're one point nine square miles. We have ten thousand five hundred people living here permanently. Okay? Todd has been here eighteen years. I was at the meeting some of the council that are still councilmen appointed him. I'm not seen on. I remember you said you would give him six months and give him an answer. Shame on you. You didn't have a special meeting. We called an emergency meeting to open up parking, to open up, you had the garbage cans removed at midnight. You had your workers out there removing the, the, the lockades, so it would be open. And Todd did the right thing. You said open it, it was open Saturday morning. Shame on you. You had six months to call a special meeting, an emergency meeting, to have your special meeting to get someone else, maybe Todd, maybe not Todd. You didn't do it. You have no one to blame but yourself. This man has worked. And if he never is good, he was doing two jobs. Good fit. Now, one of you here would be sitting, not getting paid for the work that you did or do. So again, I had three pages, but after that lecture, I just heard you tell our city council how they weren't doing the right thing. You have been here three years. Have you written a proposal of what your city manager should be, being you don't like what's posted in our book? And I copy, being you don't like what's in our handbook? What our city council is, shame on you. You want to be a leader, you drop the ball. You dropped the ball victory. I am disgusted that you would stand here and tell your fellow council people that not you did a good job, they did a good job. No, you're a team, and your team works for us. You told us that six months is eight months, almost nine months. So I say no search. You drop the ball. You didn't. Todd didn't do anything but do a great job to support this city when its thumbs were up against the wall. You wanted the things down, they were down. I am embarrassed that you summoned your council people in the way that you just spoke to them in an open forum. It didn't put you in a good light in my eyes. I applaud, I applaud Todd.
Go ahead, do it to the
I gave all the points, man. Hold on, I also, I'm happy for him. Okay, so for the record, are you shaking? Seventy seventeen, hard down. I'm a resident, I'm a voter, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a property owner. And we hear a lot of transparency these days. In our federal government, in our state government, we are all about wanting more transparency. And that's a legitimate demand of our elected officials. So, in the interest of transparency and for, in the interest of appropriate process, I direct our city council to conduct an employment search for the position of city manager, and I invite our acting city manager to apply for the job. Because look at it this way, if you are selected ultimately, there will be no questions asked. You will come in without any thinking over your head. And we will have the satisfaction of knowing you were the best and it's done trans counting. So with all due respect, I direct you to conduct a search. Thank you.
Point of information. Yes, the point of information. Anthony. May a point of information. I would like Anthony's clarification on the directive to Todd. I believe that is as one that he is not, this point of information can be done at any point of meeting by anybody in the room. I'm asking Anthony to give us the directive that was given when Todd was hired. My understanding, and my manager said in six months, we will make a decision. It wasn't eight. You dropped the ball. I think this whole thing is illegal. Anthony, could you make clarification on that, please, please?
The council wants me to, like, I mean, it's not not like anything illegal, but if it was going on, I recall six months being mentioned, I would have to refer to the minutes as the act that the council made, but it's council authority to appoint when the council
We, that's, that's not kind of me to decide, and I asked the council to give Todd Morley a six-month probation, like all the, I have the face like it was to fill in the city manager in a period of six months, we would make that decision. Now, to answer some of the questions
Now, to answer some of the questions and the comments that I heard tonight, why we didn't do it, we haven't had anything but virtual meetings because of the COVID. We did meet, pretty kind, I think, by virtual, by computer, which is a lot of time to set up, and certain things that we did discuss for certain. And the comment was made at that six-month appointment meeting was that when we, we had a comment was made that we would wait until we met in person again to appoint. Now, we didn't know it was going to take, take months or whatever it took to meet in person. So that's why we did not meet virtually, because it was strictly written in person. And if we did that virtually, and went ahead and done it virtually, we would have probably been sworn for that because we couldn't wait until we could meet in person. And we're meeting in person for the first time since that appointment.
In reference to that matter, I understand that in September, you met between October and February. So there were months that you didn't need. So I'm just saying that I believe that this is, you have emergency...
We had a six-month trial, it's been eight months, and we haven't had a meeting in person for three months. Mr. Mayor, just, we're here tonight to meet in person, we're going to go ahead and...
We said six months, and it does say six months and hire Todd. It was six months and hire Todd, and we all said the word over. Over, go out for, as Angela said in the beginning, out for a search. It was never, as six months, Todd should be hired.
No, no, I didn't say it.
I didn't say anything to this.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of confusion about the word. I've heard a lot of things, and I had, there are too many remarks I didn't find out because there was a lot of comments have been made tonight, that I could probably sit here for another three hours and review what had been said, but I'm not going to do that. I want to move forward, we're going to be here a long time. Do we have any more quick comments? Because I want to get the resident emails. There's several of them, but we're ready to... Any quick comment?
I would just like to say, I thought, I hit up at a meeting. I'm thinking it was before I made the motion, let's hire Todd, or let's talk about this. And nothing happened. I think I was told by the mayor, no, we have to wait for six months.
We decided on six months wait.
And I wasn't part of that.
It turned into eight months. Sorry, I didn't control the quota. And we stated was, very plain and right, not until we meet in person. Otherwise, we probably would have done it perfectly, or we could have tried to do it virtually or whatever. That's one of the things that was misinformed, very misinformed. If you know all those fine dots across the eyes, and all those business about all these comments I heard, I'm not going to be in them, we're just going to do it. Everybody, there's three commenting for right now?
I think that there's one other point here. We want to do our best. We're trying to do our best for the citizens of Cape Canaveral. Please, let us make that area clear. I just wanted to say, we did have our strategic planning meeting. We were going to discuss this at one time, and we were going to be able to best publicly explain it to them, too. So, part of the problem is that we really feel like we haven't had quite enough time to discuss it. But I think it's time tonight that we are going to make a decision tonight. We're going to call the question, and we're going to make a decision. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody outside of the chamber? We got any chairs, I guess it probably isn't. We have emails that we have not written into the record. There's plenty of emails. I'm sure everybody got a list of what was sent out today. We have the option to have somebody read all these emails, or we can just look at the tally, I think, with the tally on it. But I know there was an email that's... Do y'all want to hear, or just like, oh, fifty emails? Was there, there was a tally on it?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, wasn't it?
Could you tell us what the tally is on?
That's what I was looking for. It was on, what was the tally? Yeah, I don't know what it was. It was on there? Oh, there it is.
It's on the second page.
There was a poll, forty-nine emails that came in through the server at City Hall. They didn't come to you on the computer at home or where it was on the server. There was three were duplicates from the same people. One had no comments, so that's four. Forty had for option two, that's forty-four. And five were for option one, that's forty-nine. Now, I can tell you, these emails, most of them, I would think, were generated, but I saw a comment come back from one of the citizens on an email about one of the councilpeople grown enough to support for opposition. I think it was the wrong way to do things, we talked about transparency. That's the wrong way to operate this, as far as you go.
Point board, point board, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, when a council member contacts the residents of the community to find out what their feelings are about something, so he can better or she can better represent upon council at a meeting, that is not going, go to a party.
And it was on a public email, how is that transparency?
That is very transparent.
Actually, no, my point is...
I have a question.
My point is, it says right in here, he asking, we ask for support in opposition to this, to this meeting or email, blah, blah, blah.
Where did I ask for support in opposition? That's not true. I said, I put my position, but I didn't say...
My position, and this is, this is from you, Mr. Ward. My position is that we should choose option two. If that isn't asking for support to oppose, I don't know what it is, right now.
That's my position.
No, that is okay, but that's, that's not the way. I could have probably, when I was generating a hundred and fifty...
Well, you should have, you should have.
I don't have a hair. I let the citizens, I let the citizens have a meeting. And in this meeting, I can tell the ones that were here, y'all spoke to these. But I, I think generating opposition to a object or a subject that I'm going to support or not support is not the way. Because that only enlightens me, is how he's going to pull, I'm going to vote for him. That's not right, that kind of...
Mayor, that's not, that's off of you.
I, I'm not, this is all comments.
Well, you haven't explained what this... So this is where transparency comes in. You want to upset this community, you're trying to shut it down. First of all, you said option, you said option one or two, they don't...
Wait, wait, wait.
It says that they... No, it says at the meeting, city staff will read your written comment at its public record. So the citizens emailed this in with...
You're asking for support, I'm not here...
But what were the options? I don't even know.
Okay, I'm going to ask the council, do you want to hear all forty in the email, or do you just want to hear our stuff?
I just want to hear what the options were, and just something to tell them.
Option, option one was to hire Todd more. Option two was to go out and then executive search and give Todd a chance to apply for that job. So none of it worked against Todd. They were both quote Todd, one said it's to be tied with comparison others, option one was with it. That's the options. And I believe that the citizens, the citizens who wrote in to this spent time to write in, and I gave them both options. I didn't, oh, if I wanted to, I could have probably... Since we've got hundreds of people emailing, but it's today, here's the way I'm going to, I need your support.
That's the way you did it.
That isn't the way I... Or itself. These citizens said, they were told that they would read, it says city staff will read your comment and have a public record. I think we have it.
Very, very, very plain, very plain, which I do. I don't put emails out like that, I'm sorry. The weather's out there, the weather's out there for people to look at what's going on. I don't need to show people, they're in their heat drums, and it's going to cut the outposts, for that I don't like. That's the way, that's kind of not like...
Excuse me, I just like to point out that these are forty people out of ten thousand five hundred.
Right.
So it's a very smart advantage of people. Yes, they should resign.
No, it's not, Angela, do you want to have these emails read publicly?
No, I...
It's not, I'm probably going to talk, we've got forty-nine people going to talk in the air.
We told them that we would read them. The citizen says, if they take the time to do that, we would read it. So now we're going to, is that... When you don't read them, is that good for transparency? I don't think it is. I think that reading is transparency.
You're sitting there for the whole over.
I don't have to sit here.
We get, we get your point, but I'm asking you what's on over there.
I, yes, I will think that. Like, yeah, you told me to do it.
I said, we've got polling. And my point on this is, we didn't want the citizens, when we have, when we have the beach access thing, we didn't listen to the citizens then, when they wanted, when they were overwhelmingly in support of keeping the beach parking closed. Now, you've got somebody sent a bunch of emails just a couple hours before the meeting, that's good. I know what the citizens, in my opinion, I know what citizens want. And I polled the citizens in my community and other communities. So to say that the other voices being unheard is not being heard. I have polled anybody.
Neither have I. That's not a poll.
I have asked by constituents, do you want to be the manager? I've had them talk to me on the street and talk to me. Yes, I've had maybe two of them, gotten to them. Business people, you got business people in this town. That won't be very friendly anymore, this, this on that, R and F, whatever. But I do not poll people. I'm sorry. That to me is just low, low. That is dirty politics. When you go out and get a group of people, come in, and let's all raise, tell them, get out there, and that's dirty politics. My position, I can say to you, I hear both good and bad. I don't have a problem with the bad. I understand your point, but there's a lot of points tonight, like I was telling you, that people were here raising holy devil, but they don't understand. There's something that's back in the law that says, oh, you know, oh, this or that. I'm not sure, there's too numerous for me to remember. I had a certain conversation rebuttal in here, but I don't want to do that, I don't have time.
Do we call a question? Can we call a question there, or vote?
That's what we're fixing to do.
And then maybe we can take a break.
You got, you got... We're talking about whether we want to read forty-nine emails.
No.
No, yes.
Yes, we have an obligation.
You want to...
Great transparency.
The public emails. Yes, there's a...
The notice that went out, it said, if somebody provides written comments prior to four p.m., the written comments will be entered into the record at a minimum. It also says that it would be read into the record by staff. The notice also says that the time allocated for each person for the public comment is subject to the discretion of the board may be reduced from three minutes that are allowed based on the number of speakers and comments received. So, in the general procedure here, if the number of comments is rather large, the council is in discretion to reduce the time period for the public comment. So, if the council does not want to read them by reeling all in, you know, the time of date, and you need to vote to reduce the time period, that is very minimal, they need to go to the end of the record. And I would suggest that you read the names of the, at minimum, read the names of the people that have provided a comment and just the summary of whether we read them for option one or two at a minute, just so it's clear in the record.
But if we read, the issue will be past ten o'clock, we'll never get to...
Or you can talk, we can play any time during reading, I so far, please. Okay? I'll wait for you.
We've got to read the names of the people. You surprise all of us.
Blah, blah. Well, you need to, whether the council wants to have them read in their entirety, reduce the time period. I don't think, well, the council, so I don't vote on that procedural question.
I would like to do it like Anthony said.
So Anthony, basically what you're saying is, we just ask the person, yea or nay, for time? And keep it, we got to keep it.
First, the council has to decide whether it's one of the stick with reading all in or their entirety, or reduce the time period. So you need to vote on that procedural question. And then if the council's decision is to reduce the time period, then one suggestion is to at least read the name of the person that submitted the comment and whether they were for option one or option two, which is spelled out on the agenda.
I'll make the motion that we reduce the time period of the...
I'll say that.
That it's submitted.
I'll say that.
Sure, before we vote, we got to call these people, or, or on their email.
They're all the emails.
She has all of them.
They believe the limits.
Okay, you have all of them.
Those will be attached to the minutes as public comment.
But we don't see, we haven't got any of the, I mean...
Not the tally.
We got the tally, yeah, okay. So what are we...
So you would, you have a motion, you have a motion and a second. It needs to be dispensed with, and that's to reduce the time period due to the quantity of emails received. And my suggestion was just to simply, when you reduce the time period, just to read the name of the person that submitted the comment and whether they were for option one or two, as specifically stated in the cabinet.
Basically, last thing we're...
Right, you had to have a vote of the council.
That's clarify your consensus was. But we're going to read the name and then the way they said, as far as reading.
The majority, the majority of the council, but reduce the time period.
We call the roll, one, motion, yes. Correct.
You have a motion on the side.
Got a motion on the side.
Question? Yes. You had your name on the cutout, so I have to pick option one or option two.
Option one, I will pay it, whether it is option one or option two. Let's say yea or nay for the... All right. Over the roll.
Yeah, for Tim Brown?
Four.
Yarrow?
Four.
Councilman Calm, or Councilman Morrison?
Against.
Councilman Reagan?
Four.
All right, what, option two would be the option two on the agenda, or option one would be to go ahead and move aside? Option two is against the point of power. Everybody understand that?
No.
No.
Option two is...
Or I mean, I'm applying, would be option one. Option two is whether we go out for...
Exactly, sir. You just said against Todd, it's not against Todd, correct?
I'm sorry, I just...
It's okay.
I'm going to go down, not fast, but I'm going to go fast enough before we get through this. Blaha, two. Whitman, two. Fungello, two. Agen, two. Willard, two. Chadwick, two. Miller, one. Rooney, one. Scott, two. Deuce, two. McGee, two. Spencer, two. Castello, two. O'Hagan, two. Freeman, two. Hewitt, two. Cooper, two. Aaron, two. Holland, two. Wyner, two. Wenzel, two. Smith, one. Roberts, two. Eagle, two. Bovar, two. Campbell, two. Applethickus, two. We left, no person come. Or, or Weinberg, two. We left, that was the second email, two. We left, two. Coleman, two. Rickel, one. James, two. Rickel, two. Ross, two. Flomella, two. Campbell, two emails, same option. Plume, two. Jason. Benniger, two. Don't know who this was, this email, I don't know. CMN forty seven oh three, two. Urkel, two. Nine stack, one. Corbett, two. Moines, two. C. Plume, two. Davis, nothing. DeYoung, two. That's all forty nine. Total was three duplicates. No comment was one and forty was for two and five for one.
And Mr. Mayor, I think you're wrong. What I think you did is you got to tell them what. Baska, you might, I think you went from Willard to Chadwick up front, but Baska was, was two. If he was listening, he maybe, he left out.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, number five down at the front. Man, Willard. Chadwick. But it's just one was left off. That's.
Who's it?
Also Campbell, second email, same option as listed, but the city park is. For the.
Whether, I read them both.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's another Campbell two.
It says Campbell, second email, same option.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that, uh, it was reflected above that. As well, Campbell two.
Anyway, those were the ones.
I have information, man. Can I ask a question before you go?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to, uh.
Can you go on to the microphone, please?
What's my?
Uh, no, but, uh. We're sorry, I don't hear you.
My name's Lee Just Darnell, only care, you can have a resident thirty years. My concern is that I realize you have forty nine, um, letters. And most of them have been carbon copy to West. Um, I know that all of our cities, all of our council people do not. Um, receive emails or letters. Uh, sometimes we just hear through our own ears. Um. I understand that there's forty nine people expressing an opinion tonight about this issue. Um, there were many more people here when the resignation hap- happened. And, um. You can, this gentleman's life on hold, it was supposed to be for six months. It's almost ten months. And I see West has been carbon copied on all of these. I'm sure that all of you that sit in these chairs and have spoken with many of our citizens that feel that we're a small enough community that we can just. Give your opinion without our hanging down. And I want you to weigh. I would like you to weigh. But over time. Almost ten months ago, his life has been on hold. And he's been running our state. And I want you to weigh. What Todd has done for us. During this pandemic. I'm, you know that I don't stand up or stand behind anybody. I say what I have to say. Each individual, you're wonderful people. You have put this man's life on hold. He stood up. He has taken this city through a pandemic. And we're all safe. Our citizens are safe. Our city is safe. Our employees are safe. I know I always agree with everything that goes on, but I think that as individuals, you drop the ball. If you could call a special meeting. To see if we're gonna open up a pocket, then you could call the special meeting. To get your work done. You dropped the ball, not the citizens. You dropped the ball. You gave me six months. It's almost ten months. You didn't step up. It wasn't us, the citizens. It's everybody in that. And to put us on hold together, put that man's life on hold together. It's simple. It's a shame. He went through a new commander at the police department. He's gone through this pandemic. He's held your hands. He got your parking opened. And for now, you just say, oh, you wanted to change the rules and open it up too early, or now you don't compress. I wanted you then, but you don't like the now. You can't remove this necessity. And as a citizen of Cape Canaveral. I think. That you owe this man. Something. Like a vote tonight. If you voted no, you voted no. But to have only the people that carbon copied West's emails. I'm not here. Let's call. We should be, we should say you would stay in the cell.
Mr. Mayor, I was not carbon copying. Some people are copying. Yeah, some people.
We're not discussing these emails anymore.
Excuse me, mayor. Mayor.
Stand up for everybody that knows books from.
We still have to ask the go to webinar attendees.
Go in there before we don't, done discussing.
Well, you got my gentleman standing up.
We're gonna be, uh, discussing. We're going to the weather. Then go.
Okay, yes, sir. We have three hands raised. Uh, we've apparently had some technical difficulties with people raising hands. So I'll, I'll go to the first person, but I want to remind everyone that if your hand icon is illuminated or activated and you do not intend to speak. You can simply click it again to lower your hand. All right, we'll move ahead to the first hand raised, Mr. Patrick Campbell. Mr. Campbell, you have three minutes.
Three minutes. I'm hoping that everybody's in, the sound quality, the sound quality is quite poor. I just wanted to, uh. Keep that my first email be read and be directed because it's more than. Just a vote. Thank you.
Sounds like my work needs some.
It's not personal.
It's not.
Did that come through?
Mr. Mayor, I move that, it looks like you want to memorize the step up. I move that we take a, a five minute recess. Maybe that people might have time to get these stuff, technical difficulties. Your names all the time and get back and I think we could all benefit from that.
All right, let, let's see what's wrong with. Is there a way you can get them to get back to Campbell?
Daniel, you should be able to hear me now.
Affirmative.
Did you have any luck with Mr. Campbell?
I sent an email.
One of the silence.
Daniel, do you want to call on Mr. Campbell?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I just wanted to, um, I just wanted to ask that my first email been be read into the record. It was more, there was more content in my first email than just the vote. There was a question about headhunters that Mr. Hove had contacted. And, um, another question embedded in that email too. I would like it read into the record.
Mr. Campbell, are you referring to?
The, the record that you had, the email that you have up now is the one I would like you to read in the record. I, I would do it myself and my voice isn't strong enough at this point.
Okay, I can do it.
Thank you.
Todd Campbell, Tuesday, June 16th, 2020 at 2:27 PM. City council meeting, comments to item for action number five. I submitted a public records request in the meeting on 4/21/2020. Mayor mentioned emails he received concerning Todd Morley as city manager. I would like to see all emails to the mayor over the period. Mr. Morley has been city manager concerning Mr. Morley continuing as city manager. Six emails were returned, two supported a search for candidates, three supported appointing Todd. One had nothing to do with Todd being permanent. On 4/21/2020, Mr. Hove announced that he has talked to two headhunters and was told to keep who he has. No one better out there. Public record requests revealed Mr. Hove's actions essay. The following persons I have conversation with regarding requests for headhunters were verbal. No records are Dr. Tom Freeho and W. N. Redmond. Mr. Freeho has executive recruiter credentials, Redmond does not. I would like to know what criteria Mr. Freeho evaluated to determine there is no one better out there. I would al- I'd also like the city to use an executive recruiting firm to search for candidates using at least a well-defined set of requirements, expectations, vision for the city, essential functions. And then to, um, he just listed out the email summaries. Do, do you want that read into the record as well? Or is that, are those the two questions you were?
No, that, no, that's, that's not necessary. The first part was the, um, one that I wanted read in. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's the only email that you're referring to?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel, what are the others?
Uh, we have, uh, Chris Cloney with a hand raised. Christopher Cloney, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, it was not my intention to speak tonight, but as you all couldn't be bothered to read my email, um, I'll read it to you. I was present at the meeting that terminated the prior city manager after his private meeting with the mayor, the details of which were not revealed. A search for a replacement was discussed, but basically tabled. Without prejudice to Mr. Morley, the equivalent of an RFP should be issued for the position. Given today's technologies that are our alternatives to an expensive recruitment effort, opening the position to qualified applicants who will live in our city can only be in the best interest of the residents. I note that the position is not even listed on the city's employment website. Also, it seems odd to me that the council proposes first appointing someone to a position and then negotiating the contract. Couldn't the salary and benefits be first determined and published before filing that position? Thank you.
All right, are we ready to move on to the next one?
Yes.
Mr. John Price. You are on, you have three minutes.
Hi, it's actually Vicky Price. And I just wanted to say that from a mathematical perspective, the poll, the 49 people is very biased because, um, according to the email Wes Morrison sent out, he stated what he was going to do. And therefore statistically, that makes that a very biased sample. And my email, uh, unfortunately didn't get put in because I didn't get it out in time. But my statement was that I agree it's a very important decision that you have effectively delayed beyond what was prudent. If you wanted to do a search, it should have been started months ago, pre-COVID. You have had Mr. Morley working without a contract beyond what is fair. I ask that you ask yourselves the following questions. One, did he do a good job through this pandemic with city management? Two, does he lead his staff effectively and well? Three, has he managed the city resources effectively and efficiently? And number four, how would you feel if you were the city manager and his city council strung you out over a long period of time and then decided to do a job search? That's all I have to say, and I just caution you to use those 49 emails. We'll, um, take that into consideration that it was stated what he was going to do. So it is a biased sample statistically. Thank you.
All right, uh, we, uh, he had his hand raised earlier. His hand is raised again, uh, Mr. Don Willis. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay, um, I have sent my position to the board prior and you're all well aware of it. Um, however, I never received an email regarding the, uh, two options that Mr. Morrison had, uh, put forth. Uh, so to me, uh, as Ms. Price just previously stated, that that, uh, sampling is somewhat, uh, biased. And who were all the samples sent to, all these emails sent to, if not everybody in Cape Canaveral. Thank you.
All right, we have, uh, Rob Brithar. Rob, you have three minutes.
Hello, actually this is Diane Callier. My husband had, had chimed in. Um, I would like my letter, which was an email letter to be read into the record because it was not included in the summary that Mr. Hove read. And I was not responding to any kind of a poll from Mr. Morrison. It was an email that I sent in about my feelings on the, the matter. It was short, it was brief. I believe that you can, can read it into the record. And I want to also make, uh, known that I really object to the council writing off emails that have been sent in with the intent that they be read into the record because you don't have time. But then you allow three minutes per person for people to chime in over the internet and in person. It's not fair, it's not equitable. Essentially, you're creating a double level of citizenship in, casting off the comments of some people who are second, uh, second citizens. Um, people who submit comments have, should have the opportunity to be heard regardless of how they submit the comments. Thank you.
I, I, I didn't quite catch that name, ma'am, uh, should display your email on the record.
Diane Callier, the last name is spelled C.A.L.L.I.E.R. I sent it in this afternoon.
I, I can't get to my email at the moment. Daniel, can you pull up her email? Or the city attorney is requesting that she read it into the record herself.
I'm currently searching for the email. I don't see one from, from that last name.
It may not. Daniel, go back and look in the public comments folder if you can.
Give me one moment. If I could ask you, ma'am, what, uh, is there, is there was a specific email address you used?
My email address is C.L.E.O. 1227. That's how it starts off. I sent it in through the city website and identified that it was a comment on item number five.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say I had a message from a resident similar to Diane who said that they're, they submitted it to the website. It was not working. I also got, uh, an issue. I reported this to Stephanie earlier. Around a citizen who tried to use the website and it came back that there were broken links. So there should be not to anyone's fault, some issues with the online public comment forum. Get to speak with Stephanie and I, I just on recess got another message that's consistent with, with Ms. Diane's issue.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I'll be brief and I'll just try and summarize it. Um, basically I have nothing against Mr. Morley. He seems like a very nice man. He's done some very good things that I've spent my career in government. And as a procedural matter, it's always the best idea to advertise for management positions. It's nothing against inside or hiring from the inside because you allow people from the inside to apply. What it does though is help you assure that you get the best possible candidates as well as inside candidates and external candidates so that you can hire the best possible candidate for the job. That's what the citizens of this city deserve as well as the, the workers of the, the city, as well as the city council. There are a number of qualities of a good city manager. Financial expertise, um, obviously people skills, but also the ability to bring bad news and sometimes confront people when they have bad ideas or bad proposals. And I'm sure that Mr. Morley would compete very well. But as a matter of practice, this is something that the city should be doing all the time. It's nothing against Mr. Morley, it's just good, sound practice. So I would vote for having an external search. It doesn't have to cost a lot. You could limit it to the, the state of Florida. You don't have to pay for people to come to interview. You could interview them virtually. Um, again, I don't think you even need to go with a headhunter if you don't want to spend that kind of a money. There were all sorts of ways to advertise, uh, for, for these types of positions. That's my input. Thank you for letting me have my say.
All right, uh, it looks like we did have a technical glitch with the email. I, I did find Ms. Collier's email. It didn't have any content in it, but it, she did submit an, an email. We do have one more. I'll see if I can display it on the screen. Give me one second. It was not caught earlier because of a technical glitch. My apologies. All right, this looks like the one that, that was not caught earlier. From, uh, David Downing.
Daniel, go ahead and read that into the record, please.
Okay. Uh, this is from David Downing. "I am writing in reference to the possible decision of another backdoor deal to hire Todd Morley as the new city manager. In light of the recent debacle concerning the previous city manager and how that was handled by the city council, I implore you to embrace transparency for a change. I suggest that we utilize a recruiting firm and find the possible experienced candidate to lead the city into the future. There are many challenges in the future that the city will be facing and have a proven leader with some fresh ideas will ensure our city to proper, prosper. I would hope Todd Morley would apply for the position and is selected to be it. At least it will be an open competition and that transparency thing instead of another backdoor deal from the city council. I do not consider this a waste of money, but an opportunity to hire the best qualified person to take us into the future." And at this time, the only hands raised are individuals that have already spoken. They may have accidentally raised their hand again in act, by accident. Repeat that, please.
Is the city council finished with other comment through the webinar service?
Uh, Mr. Don Willis and the woman that was speaking, uh, Ms. Collier both have their hands raised again. I'm not sure if that means that they want to speak again. We've been having some glitches with the hands raised, apparently.
Yeah. So public comment is over then? Right, council, you've heard all the static, uh, emails, all the people been, but all people have wondered that they're safe. A lot of people better safe us. Think it's time for a motion. And thus, talk for a motion either option one, option two, argumentable.
I'd like to make a motion that we discuss aside, but at that point, I thought only with present, present city manager, subject to council's approval, the city manager appointment agreement, such point meeting will conduct. Option two, the city manager appointment service subject to council's preference, per the city council's previous direction given as that equal to 1,400.
I'll second.
So the motion is clarified, is clarified.
So they don't need to make a motion to, to stand by?
They need to make a motion either to.
Okay, I'll make a motion and then we'll go.
I'd like to make a motion to.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Todd Morley as a permanent city manager, that's my motion.
I'll second.
If we have a motion to accept Todd Morley as a city manager, or Mr. Brown, if they have a motion seconded by, by, overall.
That's fine, but we have to bring it back for discussion. I know you would love to jam this.
That, but you don't, you don't want to repeat though. You don't want to repeat because we've heard, well, 35 minutes.
We're all adults here.
I know.
I know you might be over it, but, but council member Collins over there trying to wait for me.
This may, this is one of the general rules.
I missed.
This motion on the step answer, the council.
We go back into the discussion and we're going to.
We're all adults here. I think, I know you might be over it, but, but council member Helen's over there trying to wait for me. Just, just under the general rules.
I missed.
This motion on the step answer, the council.
We go back into the discussion and we're going to get a chart.
Which made it out of body only. We got a motion that's been put on the floor. And.
I don't know what else we can discuss.
But it's for you all to decide. But there is, honestly, they've also got some motion that's been voted on, on the floor.
My ears are on fire from here. No, but we don't need to hear it. We got something we find.
Okay. I would like to, maybe how, as a council, council, how do we fix this? Since we've been accused of not doing our job, which I can agree with that, I think that the search should have happened a long time ago. It didn't. So let's, how do we fix this? How can we do a small search? So the cloud of the good old boy thing doesn't cover a little part for the, for the duration of his time? Can we, does it cost? Can we do a Florida League of City search for a local city manager? Just so he has the job as a duly appointed person without any cloud. I hate to see him take the job or us give him the job and this is always going to be hanging on board. So as a council, can we do our job and come up with a plan? Thirty days? Is Todd willing to wait thirty days? Can we talk to Todd? Can we ask Todd, what's your vision for the city? How do you feel about this? I know we've strung you along for a long time. I feel bad about that. I know that you're a good person. I, you know, like I said, you've got that little, I'm learning, you're learning your position. You've been with the city a long time. I just want you to take the job and not have anything hanging on you. So you are free to be our city manager and lead our city ahead. Can we hear from you, Todd?
That's the mayor's good counsel. Okay. I don't, I don't remember. But I'll tell you how you can fix it. We should have fixed it a long time ago. Yeah.
I actually.
We gotta do the drop on the ball. We need to do our jobs. We gotta, we gotta get a stay at home, close the gates, nobody to go, wear masks, do this.
I brought it up in February. I brought it up in February.
Yes, we know. We gave you six months in September.
Now, why didn't you start searching February? So now the guy wouldn't be hanging on.
Because, because you also approved a motion that, right? To give Todd Morley six months as city manager.
That was in September instead.
Okay, and then you're wanting to meet in February. That's one or three months later. We gave you six months.
But we should have started a search that.
But the, but the decision, and I'm agreeing with the mayor, was, no, we committed to give Todd six months. And everyone keeps saying, we held him up, we strung him along. He was getting paid the whole time. Who gave him the authority for a pay raise? Not, so.
He would do, well, he got promoted by, by HR. He would do.
But where is that invented? Anthony, can you put your fair price on it? Because I haven't found that. That's the issue. And I, and I agree with you. We had everyone, the whole of us on the left there, because everyone had.
But there were, everybody blamed us for not doing our job.
It was, the industry's fine. We didn't allow a search. That's not a big injustice to Todd. He's the acting manager. He's been sitting that role. He wasn't getting paid that way for it.
I did tell you that you went out for a search. There's a couple searches underway right now in the county. The price of searches doesn't hurt from, I think, seventeen to thirteen thousand to twenty-six something. And that covers just the search fact. Now you gotta pay for the people to come to the board, send everybody here.
It's virtually now.
It's worth every penny.
Ms. Rayman, you know a lot about Florida League of Cities. Isn't there a, a program that they, they will go and look for a city manager? Yeah, it's true.
I spoke to him.
Okay, and it's previous city managers or retired city managers that do a search within our state or county, however you want to do it. And it doesn't cost anyone. Is that true or is that not true?
I had a call with George Forbes, who's our rep, and Mr. Parker is out there. They, they, there's three options. Anthony's been given this consistently too. We can do it in-house. We can do it through a, an executive recruiting firm, or we can use what they call their senior advisors program. It was proposed to the city of Thurgood and Solid. And then Parker gave that. All, they, they do a complimentary, but they didn't want typically travel then a little bit, you know, to come over here, but it's minimal. They assist in writing the job description. They assist in going out and placing the advertisement. But they told me, if you want the best of the best, where you can get a rolodex full of options and see, you know, forty, fifty, hundreds of options taken out, which I think there's a lot of good candidates, then you would use an executive firm. And he said, we can help you bridge that as well. And I said, well, I can't make a decision, but if the council gets to that point to where we want to come from, he said, then he would come back and present. And, and, and those resources are there for us to take advantage of this.
Hey, I'm gonna go back to your questions. You asked Todd Morley a question and Todd had an adjustment for a lead, whether you should ask. You wanted to ask a question, Todd. You feel free to ask. What do you feel? Yeah, good question. Oh, yeah. You're good at good questions.
Clearly, this is a council decision, in my opinion, would always seem to be self-serving. So I will refrain from giving my opinion. You know I want the job. You know I can do the job. But there's a council decision to make.
I have something to say.
You're right. You got it.
No, the raise that Mr. Morrison is referring to, Todd, can I ask?
I was going to ask her, but it's up to him.
How can you tell us how that happened and, and, or how it came about? Mayor said that you were duly raised then, and then you took the job for six months, which we expect you to get some money. So can you just tell us a little bit about?
With no direction from city council, went to HR and asked for a recommendation. HR director made a recommendation, which I agreed was fair. It was less than I would have asked for, but it was enough to absolutely compensate me for the work that's being done in a fair way. So in the interest of fair play, I agreed to, to the raise that was presented by the HR.
And the other question is, how, Anthony, make it know, how long does a search take? I mean, can you limit it to, okay, we're gonna do it for thirty days? Does that, is that realistic?
It all depends on the resources. So I would imagine some, like a recruiting firm, who's in the business of constantly recruiting for this type of position, probably do it much faster than if you hired somebody with no experience or. My, my chair of guests said, I would think that anybody would want to keep it out there for the minimum of thirty days just to get the attention of people that would want to submit applications. And you gotta give them a reasonable timing which to submit applications. And then depending on your resources, that would determine how long it takes you to sift through your responses. And we'll let that over to top candidates.
So my point is, I think that we need to do this right and we need to, I, I believe that if we can do this and have complete transparency, get the cloud of the good old boy theory off of Todd's back, that maybe we need to do a thirty day search. And at thirty days, he either gets the job or doesn't end up that. Because this, I mean, it's just dragging along, dragging along. And I understand if COVID and all that happens, but it's not fair to Todd and it's not fair to, I mean, he is getting paid, but, you know, having the job, it's like, okay, you're getting paid to do something, but you don't really know if you have the job. I, I just, I. There has to be a way we can fix it as a council and move forward. And then make people, and, and be transparent and get rid of the good old boy cloud.
I'm just hiring the good old boys.
I don't, I don't.
This is not a good old boy. We're right out in public. The whole thing is talking from day one. There hasn't been, not a good old boy. I'm hiring here good old boys. It's not a good old boy. We're not, we're not good old boys. It's all right here in public. It's been in public since they stepped on the, on the door. It hasn't been any good old boys. Nothing good. But I get them. You've said it four times.
May I speak?
I'm hiring here good old boys.
May I speak?
We're all, we're all in right here in front of.
I, I think it's time, I think it's time to call a question.
Sorry, I'm going. I'm trying to break the call, break the discussion.
But the reason why is because I think we're beyond the search that I asked for in October. And I think we're beyond that point. I should have been able to get other people to agree with me in October, November, December, like the legal sets. I tried, okay? Now we're beyond that. I think it's time to make a decision. We need to make a decision. Yes, Ernoff, thank you.
Six months ago, six months ago, this council, other than you, lady, appointed that man to be the city manager. We gave him six months to prove yourself and we were gonna make a decision. And the decision is past six months. Nothing is our fault. We didn't, we didn't drop the ball, I'm running the students up. We done our, we couldn't do it though. That man had been waiting for eight months for a six month decision to either appoint him or not appoint him. And me, if, if, I was sitting over there and I didn't get appointed, I'd be leaving more alone. Because there's other jobs open in the gap for this, for this decision. So you're, you're here to make a decision because that's what we promised him.
Call a question.
Motion that we accept Todd Morley as our primary.
We already have a motion.
And I said it.
And you tell, now we're in discussions, but I get a chance.
I know you're gonna, you're gonna have a discussion. You're right.
Now.
You ready?
So. I, I want to, I want to get clarity on, to just say that things went smooth. I, I'm not saying things went smooth. I agree with you there. We said six months. And at six months, along that way, I have raised a concern. I raised a meeting level decisions. I've raised a pay increase. And third, I've raised the biggest issue of all is that there's a process to this. And I didn't agree to hire Todd for over six months. I agreed with, let's go out of the process, but hey, Todd's a lot, he's getting six months and then he got it. So my question is, where in our policy does, does Todd have the authority to meet with the HR director? And it looks like according to his paper, the mayor, Judy Laber signs for a pay raise.
That's a different issue.
That's the whole issue tonight. And so, so, so I, I'm placing that, I, I acknowledge the wrong, but if we're okay. But if he's not, the issue is, what you want is that he didn't have an interim or a contract. I, you know, there is. To give a certain, he wants a contract. And, and so to have, that should, that should have been done a long time ago.
You can't do that violation of statute.
I mean, we should have done that at night, the night we appointed him, the next meeting, we should have, oh, we didn't, it, it, it was the pay raise. And so if this council's okay with moving forward without getting that question answered, that's a red flag. That's why I just sweep it under the rug.
No, that's, that's not.
Well, then, where in our policy, Anthony, if you could help, I would appreciate it. I know you don't want to hear it. Because it's not an issue.
It's not in the policy. There is no policy in the city.
So.
What kind of job I'll give you for, for, for.
No, hey, it says that the page shall be the market council. You signed unilateral, I know. You didn't have, you didn't have, you made a decision unilateral for, and back. When one, when one mayor goes, signs off on one person's pay raise, that is the total good old boy system. That's the good old boy system. And I'm saying good old boy system as much as I want, because when one person gives one person a raise, that's a good one. That's, I'm sure you don't want to hear it. And that's true. Because there's a violation of our ordinance. And I'm going to bring it back. Todd, we're gonna tell you, I agree with what he said. I would not want this to go to Florida unless it lasts. So you can clear the cloud of that. Seriously. And, and I want to support you. And I told you that I was supporting you through this process. But we're gonna do it the right way. I've got vendors that, that I want to cover grass and, because I think they do a good job. I like the deputies covering our protective services, but I don't have the authority by myself to say, yes, it's gonna be the deputies and yes, it's gonna be this construction part. But what happened was wrong. And we're gonna sit here and then move on. Call the questions, maybe gather. I'm done.
Come in information. I have a special question. Come in information. It can come in anytime through. This is he said. Boy, good information.
We're done. We're done. We're done. We're done. We're done.
I got a plea form.
You want me to call?
Call the question. Call the question.
We're going to receive a big part in this.
That's the second.
And two thirds vote against the motion. On call.
Have you got a motion?
We have a motion. I'm glad to call a question on the motion. Discussion is done. Technically, we're up to the farthest in, in motion. But the second, we're gonna call a question and two thirds vote of the council to call a question procedurally. That one individual council can't just call a question. So certainly, any of the members of the council can make a motion to call a question and they get.
You have to call a question from two people.
They make a motion and have a second, they call a vote on the call of question. Four council members agree to call a question, then the chair must call the vote on the motion. Or which is option one. So that's procedurally how you advance the squad of votes.
Call a question.
We got a motion on the floor.
You got a motion on the floor. A substantive motion on the floor to go to option one. You got one council member, you're discussing, you have one council member who wants to call a question, another council member that's mentioned call a question. But I have a, a second, a formal motion and a second motion they made.
And call a question. And then I, now, does anyone want a second? Call a question.
Now, if this forum, they call a question, then the discussion stops and you vote on the substantive motion that was previously made, which was option one.
Right, I made that motion.
You got, you got now, you got a procedural motion to call a question.
Or.
A call.
Call a question.
Just a vote.
Just to stop the discussion and then proceed. Mayor, for ten, second to call a question.
He made a motion.
She made a motion to call a question. On the motion that was made.
I already made a motion twice before.
Mayor Burton Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hope?
Four.
Councilmember Helen, against. Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Councilmember Rayman?
Four.
Result of that is you're still not.
I'm gonna call a question.
You're still in the question on the motion.
On the motion. We're gonna motion by him to do option one.
Gonna be my, 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 it'd be higher.
We have a second.
And I said it.
Is that why the discussion?
So. We are discussing. I just think as, as a council, again, we need to be united. And this decision needs to be a follow-up decision for this important issue. And I don't understand why, for the transparency, that we can't do a small search. That behind us and then in thirty days, which will be the next meeting. Uh, you know. I just, I, I just think that we will always have this hanging over our head. If the procedure isn't done, and it should have been done months ago, but we can't keep dwelling in that. We have to move forward. And is there a way as a consensus of all of us that we can come up and be supportive of Todd in this? I don't, I, I just, I think it needs to be.
We all support, uh, everybody. And just.
Everybody.
Now, if you want to go off for a search, how do you want to go off for a search?
I'm saying we do it in terms of.
How do you want to go off for a search?
It's going to take several months, not, not thirty days. It will take several months.
How do you want to go off for a search? If you, if you go off for a search, either way, anyway, you're going to buy time.
Okay.
How do you want to go off for a search?
If, if, if it's not possible to do it in thirty days.
Uh, it might happen if you went and did the search, you have to leave it at about fifty thirty. So you're probably looking at, if you're going with ninety days, thirty days, which is the appropriate add or emotional materials. Thirty days, which you can last perhaps, maybe thirty days, which is back in.
This took us.
All right, so my point is. Before I got here, you've got a statement.
That's right.
You're going to be, you're going to, you're going to be for, for off for a search. And be transparent, never go through all the process.
But we should have started.
It would be four months. Motion wasn't.
Okay, so let me say this. Can we, I, I want job, I want Todd has a job. I think I just want the process to be.
You're, 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 if Todd is, you go off.
So that's what I'm saying. So let's go, push on the job, take the, we're going to get a lot of.
Yeah, I want to do it all over. I don't want anybody to know me that I don't know you did a call. But you're going to be spending another four months. You need to search by, go off and find your path.
It's never too late to do the right thing. Can we keep staying straight along? We could say, Todd, let's get an interim city manager for the next four months, execute that. He's protected, he's got pay. I think he's moving forward. And then simultaneously, po- permanently, we start a search. And at the end of a hundred twenty days, we've got Todd and these contracts coming to an end. And we've got this, and it obviously might be, need to be a hundred fifty days. But that to me is the right way to do it. Because it gives Todd the protection he needs for the, for the, he gets other contract. And he can apply for, for, for the job and we can know that we went through all the options. We can, we've got a city attorney who's been through this process with the city of Coco, who's kind of well versed in this. And he's got a lot of experiences there. We're all amongst them. The firms, I've got a list of recruit, executive recruiting firms that were sent to me from the spaceless league of cities. Or the Florida League of Cities, the senior advisors program. Anthony has sent out a, a, a list for us to look at. It's a matter of getting them together. Anthony's got the contracts that we would use, we would execute. And in a hundred twenty days, we would have candidates rolling in, interview the process. And spend, you know, I think wise money and time while Todd's protected. That is how we get fired up. Uh, but if we're just going to sit up there and just go, no, not even to go out and search at all, I can't, I can't support that.
So what, what is the point of the six months when you guys said, you got the need for that six months? It was six, so we was always want to get the job?
Yes.
We were just.
It's a good job, you're not paid for six months proving I asked for a review. Six months, which did get put together because of COVID, a lot of stuff happened because of that, that we were moving forward. Did that because of COVID. And it wasn't due to us not doing our job with this. I'm just saying why.
So when you guys, you were reading, you said, okay, so we're going to give those six months. You were always going to defend the job. Yes.
Now, that was my intention. It's proven.
Yes.
We're in. It's proven, I don't think that, always not. I always want to say during the six month probation, we was off with that.
And you all, I think that's.
We then got put down to work. This, we, we, we had COVID and then that was a meeting. That's what's been so, so we had thought, so here we are. So another, that starts six months.
I, I think by.
Four months meeting, no problem.
My councilman, Kevin Tom, orders.
He's done that, he's done that, he's proven so. So let's go ahead and vote on that right now. Good, bad, whatever, that's going to differ. What is up?
We're going to have to deal with these questions later, so.
You got favors and you can handle it.
What is there to? I just would like to say that I don't own a business. That came off of the, uh, public comments. And I, that many of the council members own businesses. I do not own a business. I'm an ordinary, everyday resident. Yes, we're ready to vote.
I don't own a business, but it has nothing to do with Todd morally and being part of that.
Right.
I don't get any favors from the city. I'm making, I'm making sure that I don't get any favors from the city. I don't get no favor, but I pay very rarely for my permits. I don't get no favor. Yeah, I got a business, I had a business in the city for fifty years, I need fucking stuff. You roll your eye, I don't give a.
Okay, so I'm saying, yes, uh, a year contract evaluation and.
Well, you have to, you have to have a motion now. And you have to have a motion.
There's a motion on the floor, right?
But I'm saying.
The motion, the motion is option, the motion is option one, which is to appoint. For the city manager position subject to an agreement that would have to be prepared. Um, and brought back to the council for a vote at the next meeting. So survey, if the council were to move in that direction and prove option one. Contract, that would be prepared if the council wanted to provide any direction before the, the next meeting. You're guiding what that contract should look like. Chair Farber will do that. What's, what's being asked right now is option one, which is to proceed to appoint. Having a fair contract. And if council, actually, if the council doesn't approve the contract, they're going to.
Do you understand your action? All you're doing, approving a contract to move the presentation. But each city, but at least we're putting. We're going to stand. All the questions, please.
Mayor Corntan Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hope?
Four.
Councilman Helen?
Four.
Councilman Morrison?
Against.
Councilman Raymond?
Four.
Thank you. Hey, we have reports. Anybody have any demo today? We're going to our report.
I kind of like what you did.
I have like, I have four. I think we have all the things.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I like, I like this idea. Look, I, I got good news coming out here on the, if the council will. That's it.
I didn't understand, but.
Yeah.
Discussion policy.
Yeah, so, uh, this, this one, uh, I just want to say one comment. Um, I would like for the council to consider, just like we used to do, once a month to go over the budget. Instead of meeting with John individually, uh, via email and sometimes in person prior. I know last time those comments were made, but instead of us meeting individually, which we can still do, at least once a month. That, that we carve out fifteen minutes and to go over the budget and the policy on what's happening. That is very important to, I think, to the council. It's the most important policy thing, I think, what we'll do is pass the budget. And so I'm making a proposal to consider, uh, that, I mean, frankly, I could just put it on every single council meeting. I'm trying to be respectful and to say, we talked about the budget for fifteen minutes. And here's the way I see it. The first half of the meeting is John, the layover indoor city manager. Giving us a rundown of the financial statements, because he puts the financial down every single month. He takes five to seven minutes on that and we talk around the numbers together, no questions, boom, we move on. That is a process improvement and that's all I want to say. I don't have any questions. I just want you to consider that. And if it seems like a good idea, uh, I'm going to go ahead and put it on the next meeting to give it a shot. And if we like it, maybe we can continue it as a part of our narrative, just like the pledge, role calls on there, just budget. And if we want to pull it off, we can, but have a standing budget discussion for at least ten to fifteen minutes. Um, would be really important to.
What's purpose of that of us? Because, you know, I just am thinking, we already have the annual budget. We include, I live in my, I am the regular budget of financials. We have a staff that takes care of that. John Galileo does a beautiful job. We have it on. So what exactly is your purpose?
So, no, good question. So every month, John puts out the financial statements. So you have the budget, but you also have how you're performing against the budget. The idea was the job would go, hey, guys, we're right on track. We're forty-six percent scheduled. No questions, we move on. I just think that the public would have an opportunity to come and weigh in and receive the numbers, to seek, communicate how we're tracking. And it's, it's like just to stick your head under the hood once a month. And then we'll get into the audit, we'll get into these things, and it eliminates one-on-one meetings with all of us, with all of the habits here. That was it. I know that some other cities are doing it. I really liked it when I saw it happen. Uh, and it just makes us have alignment and clarity on the numbers opposed to, you know, budget season is when we actually get into proposing next year's budget. So it's just like you do when you sit down, um, of your, you know, you set a budget for your home. And you sit down and maybe with your husband, if you're the only one who does it, and you say, we're doing good, hey, you're getting a little of that in here. John can communicate that and we're just a layer. That's it. Um, if it's not.
Senator Morrison, I have a question. So that, you would want to do that before the meeting or as an agenda? Um, that could be, like we met today at five thirty for the C R A could be once.
I would.
At five thirty to go over the budget. And I think that's important now because of COVID nineteen, how things are changing, the.
Yeah.
Would you, would you want to do that one or present an agenda?
I would be fine with meeting at five thirty, um, but if the council says now, I don't want, that's how I think we used to do it. Um, it had a workshop at five thirty and then rolling to six, but council doesn't want to meet at five thirty. Um, you know, putting it on the agenda right at, you know, at the end or right before work. That might be a good place to work for it. Just a quick recap from our finance director.
Yeah.
It's like the mayor falls on Debbie Reeder's and says that, think of it like that and say. We're seventy percent on schedule or here's where we're a little heavy and we just talk about it together. Um.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't, I'm sorry, do you finish?
Yes, sir.
I don't see any issue with that, but I think Congressman Morrison said fifteen minutes. So if once a month, we could keep maybe at five forty-five instead of six, I have no issues with that if we keep it, hold it fifteen minutes.
I think that's a good idea because it's a long day working at City Hall. And especially when you're working with figures. I know my family does that. And I think it would be difficult. I think if we do it at five forty-five, fifteen minutes, we're finished by six, ready to go. The regular agenda, best, best, because that way, uh, John Galileo could go home again too. And I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. If, if John can't make it, I mean, I'll just say to you, just, just to have the opportunity for us to talk. John could dial up my phone when he's doing his time too. He can be on his way. Um, just if we have any questions, if we want to try it, let's just try it at the next meeting. And if we don't like it, we never have to do it again. Um, but I would appreciate that.
Who are we making this motion and how is it?
Um, might you change the meeting schedule? Maybe, or I could just, it's like a fifteen minute change to the agenda.
I've got a recommendation, um, she said workshop, right?
Yeah.
And you know, you know, just a motion by, by the city council to come up to a, uh, workshop on the, on the question, request that you mentioned. Um, prior to the next meeting, five forty-five, council can vote on it and then we're clear that the council actually call the workshop. Fifteen minutes.
If mayor, if mayor, I can make that. Uh, I knew that we scheduled a, a workshop at the next city council meeting for a fifteen minute. Starting at, uh, five forty-five to discuss the monthly financials.
I'll second it.
This part, I mean, this is.
This one.
One minute.
We're going to do it on the seat office and then we'll.
Let's say.
Close in a second. Any discussion? Close the discussion, I'll be back.
Mayor Corntan Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hope?
Four.
Councilman Helen?
Four.
Councilman Morrison?
Four.
Councilman Raymond?
Four.
I have no response.
Senator, I move that we take no action on this item.
Sorry.
I move that we take no action on this item and, um, I have no comments. This is now irrelevant. It's old business from last.
You're right, I think we move on to the next. Okay.
Rest me. This is mine. Um, out of respect for our residents at our monthly meetings. Residents have three minutes for public comment and council members should limit their comments to three minutes. A well-prepared council member should have questions answered by staff prior to every meeting. And be able to make an organized presentation in three minutes or less. This will allow sufficient time to conduct business effectively. So discussion, I feel very strongly about this. We get a lot of repetition and several of us find that it's just, it goes on and on and on. And we need to limit ourselves. This is something that we need to do. A lot of the councils police themselves. I've met council members, I've met the council meeting in Rockledge. It's fifty, fifty cent. One hour is the longest council meeting. They get their business done. We can't even complete the agenda these days. So I think it's time that we police ourselves. Three minutes is plenty of time. Thank you. I'm done.
Yeah. Uh, we can't complete an agenda. We, that's true, we couldn't complete the last agenda. But in my history, I'm sure we've completed monthly every agenda prior to that. So that's just a false statement. And I would say that the last meeting, or the last meeting, uh, could we have been more concise yet? And I would raise my hand and say I could have been more concise. And if that's what you're going after, Councilmember Raymond. I will pledge that I will be more concise. Uh, but the box said into three minutes for a little city. We used to be twice a month. We used to have, um, meetings that started with a workshop and public comments at that time with five. You know what we did? We said, no, we're not going to meet twice a month. We're going to meet once a month. What does that do? It cuts the public participation down an hour. Then we lowered the time from five minutes to three minutes, cut it down even more. So we're meeting once a month now. And guess what? We've said this before, some meetings are going to go longer because we choose to do that. The magnitude of the issues we're going over, uh, last meeting, again, uh, I could have been more concise on the last issue. But I do speak with staff, right? And I spoke with them prior to, to say that I got, it's not true. But that doesn't mean that after I speak with staff, I don't have things that are on discuss with the, the council. So that's it. I will pledge to, to be more concise. I don't think that this is an appropriate spot of, of conduct issue. Um, you know, it, it, we, we follow Robert's rules of order by our offices, which by understanding, we have ten minutes. It'd be interesting to see how many people actually violate by themselves, extend their middle. That's a long time. Um, so that's it. Thank you. I don't think we have a.
Okay, in, in talking to other councils, I know, for fact, the city of, city of Rockledge, which is about to say. which is about to say their issues aren't, or our issues aren't as important as theirs, if they've got a population of twenty-six thousand. They're having two meetings a month, and doing those two meetings a month in less. I just think that all of us can do a better job of maybe preparing, so we can cut these city council meetings. There's no reason why we can't cut these meetings in half. We just gotta do a better job of preparing, if we need to have notes in front of us and read them. But I think there's a lot of, on everybody's part, and I don't want to say grandstanding, but grandstanding. And I think we can all do a better job of including ourselves.
I would like to say that I think, I, I have the idea of two meetings a month, maybe if, if neither run too long. And I think at the last meeting, we were long because we were doing the building permitting.
Yeah.
And that took a long time for us to discuss it and go through the numbers, to tell us the, the different fees at different grades, and that took a very long time. And we all have been net of staff, but that's the first time where we all, as a council, get to discuss things. And it sometimes it takes more than three minutes. I, I don't think that it should be limited to three minutes. I believe that, you know, we don't need to repeat ourselves and, and go on and on and do a better job, all of us, of that. But I, I don't think we need to limit it to three minutes, because that's the only time during the month that the council needs to discuss these things, and sometimes it takes longer depending on that issue. And having a meeting twice a month, you know, as we work, if we have a big agenda coming up, maybe splitting it, you know, we don't always have that two meetings a month. But if something is coming up that we need to discuss, I probably, you know, literally didn't do two month meetings a month, or even have a workshop for it. Like, there used to be, I wasn't on board then, but like Mr. Morrison said.
Well, I'll, I mean, we, uh, met, many, many times workshops. Workshops are, workshops are fun. I've had a meeting that gone on all hours of the night over the past years, but we had a change in that, and you guys put my staff together that done all the labor that we figured, argue or talk over or argue or discuss, but we probably did a lot of work. And the, the work that we said we discussed all night long can be done by staff, and then they bring that to you and hide it to you, that we have talked about doing. And we don't workshop that we had in workshop, that's why we didn't have. Because staff workshop wouldn't be told them to do, and then brought all that to you. And there was very few changes made on what they brought, because that's what we got, totally was did. And staff did it all. We didn't sit here at bias and discuss it all, how, how we were gonna change the, the timeline progress. Staff put all that together and brought it together, and they gave us this in the form of an ordinance. We looked at it and they, they detained us. Didn't they change us? That's why we didn't have all those meetings. And it went pretty quick, but was already pre-planned for you, what you had presented. But now, you get into workshops, and believe me, you don't have fifty people out there at a workshop, and you'll never get that like none of that. Do you have, from there, compared, like that, like, that's all I would say. In the case of the building permit, that's how that was a little bit lengthy. What we prefer to do is take items to the, the permitting advisory boards when we can, because those, those are the boards that really are supposed to do the heavy lifting and, and homework and the, all the research and the data. Unfortunately, for the building permit issue, we didn't have a board to take that to. So what I think we can do is, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely increase more board issues, like you'll be getting one from a planning zoning board soon, unless they need a large rezoning project. That's taking a lot of time, but that's what those boards are for. And optionally, if council with a particularly large issue that could take time, at that time, you could say, let's save it for, for a workshop.
Right.
So as needed, but definitely, I do plan to lean on the boards more. During COVID, it's been challenging for sure to do that. All right, that's. That's, uh, we were talking about something other than what was on that item. So to do that item, like, since it's all out here, I would think that would take some, Mr. Gardner needs to think of whether or not it's necessary. I have a number of eight to, or something other like that for the council, we don't have. Yeah, that's for sure.
I will not agree, um, regarding, in council round discussion, council is correct. I think the progress rules, each council is doing ten minutes to speak on, on the item initially, and then they can speak twice on the issue, which includes the other ten minutes, and then give it back. To limit that, the council would have to adopt a special rule of order to limit the council member discussion. I have other cities that have done that. They've gone to five minutes initially, and then every council member gets to speak for five minutes on the issue, and then they can speak in an additional five minutes in, in that order until discussion is over. There's no cap on the length of the discussion, but they should probably do it in five-minute increments, and the chair has control of that.
We don't have a set policy on whether to approve or write.
Our school is kind of doing beyond that. Twice, actually, twice, ten minutes per time, per day, per, I, that's the general rule of school.
So for us to make any changes, we'd have to go.
Well, we put it in your, in your city council moving procedure, which is codified in chapter two of the code.
If, if the council's opposed to that way of naming.
I think the, 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 what, the, the other big idea when Anthony was kind of there through problem to procedure with us as the COVID hit, obviously, and all that, I think that, you know, the word concise is in it. I think that that's going to really help this, this body. I mean, today we saw some, some pains to, that thank you helped and started harms that we dealt with that. But when the time is right, I think that'll really help. I, I, and we can get what Councilmember Raymond, I think, is after. So is the rest of the group that is, we do our best to be concise.
And you can't talk to, I can't call council and say, what do you think about that? I'm not making Mr. Gardner, he's the one that. That would be a violation of sunshine law. So when we're here, this is one we talk about. And staff does a great job, but, you know, we have to answer to the people out there, and it takes sometimes longer.
Point well taken. As long as we just go on and on for forty, fifty minutes for on and on. So I think the point is taken. Point taken. Thank you.
Very. I have another one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an item.
Hold on.
Some, Patrick Campbell submitted a, on item number eight.
Okay, you saw it? Don't know if you want to hear or look at the stack.
Okay, this was submitted by Patrick Campbell, two days ago, sixteen twenty, twenty, two forty-seven P M. Item number, regarding agenda item number eight, the item submitted by Ms. Raymond is not contained to the code of conduct. The city, the city ordinances require meetings be managed within the scope of Robert Twill's order. The mayor, as the deciding officer of Robert Twill's order, have well thought out specific speaking time allotments. The city is obligated to use Robert Twill's order. The mayor is obliged, is obligated to manage to it. First, do what the ordinance says, and if you feel it needs to be changed, do it properly. And then he's put section two sixty-one, parley entry procedure, and in section two dash six-two, preside an officer underneath that, and that's it.
We move on to item nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one may be quick. Business and Economic Development Board hasn't met in about three years. They've been on a busy basis. It was developed back in twenty thirteen. And twenty thirteen, they met for four meetings. The next year, in twenty fourteen, they met for three meetings. They didn't meet at all in twenty fifteen. They met once in twenty sixteen. They met once in twenty seventeen, and they didn't meet in eighteen, they didn't meet nineteen, they haven't met at all this year. Now, with the, the issue with COVID, this board came to my mind, and we were wrestling around with item number two, uh, which would have been, to Todd's point, a good board, able to run fee reductions through at the time. So my, my request to council is that if we could say, Todd, who largely operates as Economic Development Board, or a director as well, to schedule a meeting, to brainstorm. We kind of hacked our brains on things that we could help with. Staff did the same. But this board wants help. They're going to contribute. Can we call a Economic Development Board meeting to come together, brainstorm any blind spots we may have had on what we can do to help the response to COVID? And then make a recommendation back to council whenever they're ready to pick a job out. And we get to hear some ideas from our Economic Development Board on how we can, uh, help the economic condition that the city's in. That was the hope, the goal. And I'd like to see that board meet more often. I think there's a lot of talent on there.
Do we still have a full board?
Full members. So you have a core of, you have four, yes. That's it. So the directs, my goal is to make a motion, I'm not making it right now, I'm just intending my intent, is I'd like to discuss first that, that Todd schedules an Economic Development Board meeting, or asks the chair to. And if they can get a meeting, great. If they can't meet, they can't meet. It's no big deal, but at least try.
Okay, I'll read it. And the purpose, the purpose of the meeting is to review what we can do for our local economy in the first quarter, or during COVID.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mike, can we just take consensus up on that, Anthony? Or we don't need to do a little better?
Everybody agrees with.
Okay.
Everybody agrees with.
Okay, that's it.
There's no respect to the business, so maybe no, I'm impressed, but. I don't have anybody that wants to say something, I'm not.
Thank you for doing a great job. I know it's difficult, you know, it was all cancer, I'm not impressed.
There's no problem.
But as a person who follows your goals and your work, I, I used to have like a real job. To have someone sitting in the town of six months, that happens, and I, I love you all dearly. Now, I don't want anything personal, it's the stripes and the walls, but. I appreciate that you pointed it. And he's been here eighteen years, almost ninety years, and thank you for being us a guest this time on the tour.
Let's move on to item ten. Have you ever discussed an item, or is it unchangeable?
Yeah, and let's just say this is the final item, so that's good news. And we are down, we're at ten o'clock, we're at nine forty-six, just doing a time check, so I'm gonna try to be respectful of that. This was an issue that was introduced to us back at the last city council meeting during public comment by citizen Patrick Campbell. That was read into our public comments by Mia. At that time, what I tried to do in this discussion, I was capture a historical background on what had happened. I see a citizen complaining about an issue that was, that I observed as well. And I tried to follow the email chain as well, so that for your good meetings, you could get caught up on what happened. I went in and did my best to type out verbatim exactly what you said, Mayor, about the issue, saying, where the, the citizen, Patrick, I asked for a reply in response to the video. This is pertaining to Councilmember Raymond's conduct and, and the May eighth controversial beach open meeting. That was a virtual meeting at home. The, the descriptions of the behavior were laid out by Mr. Campbell, head rolling around, private conversations with someone. And, and, you know, while I read all that, the one thing that jumped out to me was, the, the conversations happening, Councilmember Raymond, with another person. Mia was talking at one point, you were talking to another person in the room. One time you were unmuted when you were talking, I think the mayor had that, it was, was talking, I was talking. And I thought it was very disrespectful to do that. Now, this to me comes up, and I say I respect for, because this was, I sat with you behind the dials. And there's times when we sat down there, and people would come up to public comment. I would hear you gasp or making noises in council, or there, it, it just, you get frustrated, and I just find it to be distracting, and, and, and I guess we all have our problems. But that was one when I read this for Campbell's meeting, and I said, you know what? He's, he's cried out to his council, he brought it to the mayor, the mayor said, and I understood your position at the time, he said, I'm not gonna deal with this right now, I'm gonna feed this back to staff. And so what I tried to do was to gather all this together, and like, like you said, Councilmember Raymond, we police ourselves, and so this is, it's not really a function of, of the city manager to take this up, or the city attorney, they can advise and guide. This is the moment where we got to look at ourselves and go, what's the standard? You know, what are we gonna hold ourselves to? And the, the questions then there are, if you've seen this video, that's my first question. Have you had a chance to watch the video of the May eighth meeting and see how, what I'm referencing? So Mayor, just a little, you have, Mayor?
I haven't seen, I didn't watch, I saw the meeting, I didn't watch it.
And Mayor for Tim Brown, you said you have?
Yes.
And Mickey, you have watched it? And I have seen. Well, okay. So, so, and then I'll wrap up.
I understand.
But there's, there was a conversation you had. If I was here behind the dials today, when a public comment came up, or a video screen, I was just sitting there talking to somebody live, I would hope that you would call me to order, and I appreciate your comments. If you're next.
Geez, I don't know what you mean. That's walked off camera, you might have put the brush, I'll put you. So my question asked what you did when you.
Well, so Mike.
You get up off the dials, you get up off the dials and walk out of the way, so I did that, I have no idea, and if not, it could be that. You go to the bathroom, what do you do?
That's kind of personal. Look at. So, so when it says, I will, in my capacity, I will, you know, when you read through the signed code of conduct, that no one has put the code of conduct more on the agenda than Councilmember Raymond, this is her third time putting it up. And this was just that moment where people could zoom in and see what I thought was very distracting. And so, they, they, when, when you're talking, we have to have order in our meetings. We dealt with this today, where one information was coming up, and you know, there's certain norms and a tough spot. Councilmember Raymond, in the middle of the meeting, is having a live conversation with someone. My question is, who are you talking to? But most importantly, if you, Mickey, my, myself has seen the video, do we think that the code of conduct was, was, was being violated? And if so, what do we want to do about it? Do we want to say, take action? But I, I think Mr. Campbell has brought up a point, and if he, if somebody doesn't speak up, this was one that, I felt like if I did say something, it would just fall through, and that's what creates frustration in this city. So, did you watch the video? Did you think there was an issue with the code of conduct? Maybe the city attorney can go over options on how we police ourselves. I would appreciate you to understand that.
Mike, I agree with you, Albert. In my opinion, we're, we're in the middle of this virus. Exceptions have to be made. We were out of their house. Not every situation is the ideal situation. You go out and open this thing on, on, what you call it, video or whatever. You're lucky that you didn't see my three grandkids running around, because I, the whole time I was going through this, I was having to point at them. Actually, took my fingers, do all kinds of things, make sure that they didn't. Actually took my fingers, do all kinds of things, make sure that they didn't run through. Roll with everything going on in the world today, we're talking about position on the couch, rolling our eyes. Man, please give me a break. You can't be serious. There's no doubt. I might say, and there's no doubt in my mind that what her what she was doing had nothing to do with sunshine law. She might have made a motion to her husband, who I know was there at the time. We're looking for something that is not there. Thank you.
And as far as code of conduct was my question, I would just want to make sure. If you don't think that it was a sunshine law, do you think that it violated our code of conduct, her behavior on the meeting? And again, this isn't the first time I've dealt with.
That's what I'm asking you. Just so I didn't watch. I didn't study. I'm watching white people. I saw Angela a couple of times. I saw her get up and watch the video. But what do you feel, tell us, what do you feel where our road street by or they didn't go down there? I'm listening to what you're saying, but so far the sunshine law had nothing to do with it. There wasn't one of us in that room where there was Lucy was talking to. So that's kind of negates the sunshine involved. Yeah, but you're talking about the code of conduct, now the council code of conduct.
The the last page and citizen Pat Campbell pointed out some of them, but when it says just I will, I will in kind of the middle of her, I will demonstrate dignity, respect and courtesy towards those who are in contact with my council. I will demonstrate I would, when when I'm talking, when somebody's talking in this room so far today, everyone's pretty much looking at the person talking. But, you know, as a council member, if somebody's if Mia's talking, I didn't do the video or I was talking to you. Angela's over there having other conversations and just you don't really understand because you haven't watched the video. People are running that meeting, doing a good job of that meeting. But it's just painful and I and and I watched it. You might think that that meeting might be a one off as a COVID, fine. But I dealt with this respectfully, council member Raymond, to where sitting next to you, Raymond, citizens come up. So this isn't the first time. That's it. I just feel like if you ask me where when somebody's talking, you and it happened over and over and over. And if you watch the video, you'll see what I'm talking about. It has to be called the order three. This is awkward. I don't like this. Then who does it? That's the point. And and if it was the first time, okay, but it wasn't. It happened over and over a few times in meetings. Talking, is it respectful if you're talking to me right now, you're trying to talk to me and I'm having a conversation with somebody else? So she basically.
I was not. That's what you're you're saying, Captain, your perception. No, I was.
She was so so my perception, sure, is that when you watch the video, she's muted. And she's talking to someone like this. And at one point she wasn't muted and she was talking. And it kept happening over and over again.
I don't trust her to somebody.
To somebody else.
Good what you're saying. But what you're saying, I don't understand. You're not agreeing.
Uh, anyway, because you haven't seen the video, which is I can understand. Does that make sense now?
I don't think I've watched it.
And do you have proof? Do you have proof that I was talking to somebody else? And I was trying, I was trying to get the mayor's attention to try to get him to recognize Mayor Proton Brown. Because Mayor Proton Brown was trying to speak and he had his hand up and he was sitting back. And I don't think the mayor could see him at that point. So I was trying to get the mayor to talk, but I was not talking with anyone. Yes, I knew both. Yes, I know. I'm a passionate person. And that's my personality. You talk on and on. I've had several complaints about you if you want to know. But all this I made that I wouldn't do that because I think it's it's an inappropriate thing to do. All right. So what I'm saying about this is honestly, I was not talking to anyone. My iPad slipped. I did not have the proper tool and it was slipping off of my music system. So I was having difficulty with that. This is true. I have to be fixing.
There are new meetings. I did see many. I recognized and sometimes I would make a motion to that. And and not saying it, but in a way that I'd say, okay, so then Mike, I saw Mike several times. Yeah, so maybe I need to acknowledge. Here, I'll get to you in a minute, but you know. It's hard to do a virtual meeting and keep control because everybody's one of them. It's hard. And I did, if I did not see anybody to recognize, it's hard. But it's very hard because when somebody's speaking, especially when you're on that thing. I had the earphones like a year clearly because like Mike said, I did have granted at the house and they yeah, they were they were behind you, but the door was closed with my wife. I had earphones like a year. But it's very hard to acknowledge on that rather than sitting here. So it's it's I understand where you're.
What she's saying, she didn't talk to anyone. Then what is that your statement? You did not communicate.
I saw you. So the whole way. So I recommend this and if then then I had absolutely nothing.
Please, if you see the video, they they have excuses. But if you, do you believe that from that video that she was not talking to someone?
When I watched the video, I could hear her husband's talking.
Well, he may have been talking.
But I was talking.
Well, I just didn't hear her talking.
I didn't say that was a sunshine violation. All I'm saying is that.
I mean, we all do our best. We did our best for a difficult situation.
Well, if that's your statement that you weren't talking to someone, I I said, you watched the video again. Because you were clearly talking to someone. And if that person was, if you were talking about city business, Anthony, would she have disclosed that that's city business? And there's sunshine. If I was over here, I saw that. Is that sunshine?
I think that I don't think what she didn't.
But but my day was the code of conduct.
Just finish this.
Yes.
If you want to extend it, you can extend it.
I I need to provide evidence. I would spend some five minutes.
I think you have a chance to say.
I I need to provide evidence. I would spend some five minutes.
I think you have a chance to say.
Wait, wait, we gotta do this right. We will hear a problem if we know. Everybody agree to extend in five minutes?
Yes.
We don't need a roll call. Well, everybody is okay. We don't need a roll call. Roll call, please.
No motion.
There's no motion. I made a motion that we spend five minutes.
Second.
You have Proton Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hope?
Four.
Councilman Collins?
Four.
Councilman Marshall?
Four.
Councilman Moreno?
Four.
All right, who wanted the five minutes?
Me. Um, I just wanted to say, I watched the video. And to me, and you know, like Mr. Marshall was saying, Angela brings up the code of conduct a lot. And I think that that it it was very embarrassing for the council. It wasn't professional. You, I did hear you talking to your husband. I heard your husband talking. I don't know if that's sunshine law or whatever it is. But, you know, it says, I will focus on solving problems and maintain appropriate decorum and professional demeanor in contact of the city business. I know this was all a move for everyone and we were home. I'm kind of here to do the moves because my house is crazy when I have a meeting and it would be really worse than this. But I'm just saying, and Anthony, can you tell us as as a board, as the do, how do we? I mean, we had a complaint from a citizen. We have to deal with it. What to be do to be? I mean, is it just, we just try, hopefully we won't have to have at home videos anymore. But I mean, it says, I will support and advocate my beliefs and be open to understanding the views of others. And, you know, Angela, you were rolling your eyes and.
I was just very careful.
I know, but you decorum and professionalism is something that you bring up all the time. And I'm and I'm not picking on you. I'm just saying, as a complaint we got from a citizen, how do we deal with it?
I thought that we've already dealt with this. And I mean, I think that again, it's it's drumming up constantly, drumming up things in the past. We need to keep moving forward in on this council. And I think this is purely political. This is a political issue. I understand that. And I mean, and I brought up every complaint that I did from telephone calls and emails. I'm sorry, I wouldn't do that. I think it's inappropriate. I did. I I get many emails, but I don't correct them.
I think I think this can sum it up real quick. I'm 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 gonna call call for the group. I think that what has taken place here tonight, this email presented in public is enough to suffice. If we have any more problems?
So we don't, we can't do anything else.
The code of conduct was adopted by the city council. The council has agreed to represent themselves as council members and as assemblymen. It's it's rules for everybody. The code of conduct, you all police yourself. I mean, people will complain regarding council members six ways to Sunday, no matter what. But whether the council wants to discuss the code of conduct and the conduct of one of its own, then it's your prerogative to bring it up if you desire, but you're not obligated. Again, code of conduct is, you all agree to conduct yourself and represent yourself as as the body of the council. You know, it's your it's your rules.
Not too often, I think, you know, I make a letter from the public.
And Mike, what are you talking about?
The emails, not the letter, the email. Mr. Campbell. He put out a man that there is a lot of. I think that would probably, by the best century, if you want to get other than asking for Mr. Brady to be valued. Not for not for this. But it was in the email, as.
Mayor, it's ten oh five.
And then follow. And we were gonna have discussions, but I don't reckon this has to happen. They have anything that they would they would bring with us.
I just want to mention, one of the committee, uh, Commander Walters, he's been doing these stats for us all daily. I think that it's very useful, but I think the time is coming. We can stop doing that. That would be important work to do.
All right. Everybody agree? Mr. Ray? Everybody?
Uh, that's fine. I had some reports that.
All right, we're gonna for go report. Please do.